Call our meeting to order. And first item on our agenda this morning is new counselor business. Counselor McFadden?
Morning, Your Worship. On Saturday I had the occasion to attend a mock forum with some of the air cadets. Some of the air cadets have to go before a board in Prince George and they're applying to go to flight school, so they have to do a board there. So we did a little practice session for them and it was a lot of fun and they're just a great bunch of kids, so I really enjoyed that. Thank you.
Thank you for attending and I agree, I was at their awards last fall and a great, great group. Further counselor business, Counselor Rogers?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the citizens for sending me to the elected official seminar in Richmond that was sponsored by the local government leadership academy. I found it very informative and beneficial over the three days. Some of the notable sessions that I attended were newly-elected government law, municipalities and regional districts, local government partnership and collaboration, local government financial management and local government community planning. I also did stick around a little bit later and attended the climate summit, which I'd like to talk to a little bit about, to Counselor Schuman afterwards. I found some very informative things regarding that. And it was quite refreshing to be able to talk to other counselors and mayors regarding their ICE arenas and their facilities and what they're doing and their downtown core revitalization programs. And that was it for that. The other thing I'd like to bring up is at our last council meeting, we had decided to support the Rotary Club with their upcoming thing that they're putting on.
District conference?
Yes. I noticed that the platinum sponsorship that we had purchased came with four tickets. I was just, it got to me thinking about these four tickets and I would like to put a recommendation forward to be discussed either in mayor's business or a motion for it right now, that the mayor would accompany three students from graduating class of 2015 South PC Senior Secondary School to attend that conference.
So if...
Okay, so you're making that by way of a motion?
Yes, sir.
And we got it seconded by Counselor Parslow. Is there discussion on the motion?
Good idea.
Good idea.
Great idea.
Great idea. Further to that, I think that maybe the students should have to write an essay or something like that on why they should actually attend to that. Those details, I believe we should have worked out with, let the principals at the school work it out and I'd like to be a part of that, if that's okay with everybody?
Sure. So just to the, so for clarity, it's the grade 12 graduating students?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions, any comments? Are you ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you, Counselor Rogers. Anything further?
No, sir.
Any Counselor Wilbur?
Just hometown stuff, I guess. I had the honor of attending the Bethel Church Network's open house and what a great facility for our community to lessen that gap of people that are in need and could have help with groceries or clothing or furniture. They're putting together quite a unique place there and so anyone that can support, anyone who's taking part in the Coldest Night coming up, February 7th, I encourage you to do so because it's going to a great cause. The other thing I did was I met with gentlemen from Western Canadian Properties and Jane and Stefan from Spickers and so got them together and they're going to be working together to take care of some of the building and housing issues that Spickers has and they're able to fill some of the needs they have right now and then set up some longer-term goals with Spickers to also lessen that housing gap. So it was a unique opportunity, I was glad to be there and I safely can say Spickers is super excited to have somebody come on and partner with them and look after some of those issues they have. So thank you to them for doing that.
Thank you. And you know, in attending that thing with the Bethel Pentecostal and the Coldest Night of the Year in February, I wonder if we should invite Jacqueline in to give a presentation as a delegation?
That'd be a great idea.
Prior to that, just so we can raise the awareness of what they're doing in the community and what they're working on, just to raise some awareness.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea. For example, they've given out 180 hampers to families for fresh vegetables and meat and stuff in our community. That's a lot of hampers.
Sure.
Perfect. No, I think that would be a great idea.
Good, thank you. Further counselor business, Counselor Parslow?
Yes, the LGA conference, it was referenced by Counselor Rogers, I attended as well. And I found each session to be very interesting. I think it was, some of us discussed it afterwards, we thought it was much higher quality than we'd experienced before. I will be, I've been in contact with a couple of the presenters already. I just want to flag that maybe at the, not this committee, the whole meeting that we're in it today, but maybe in the next one, I wouldn't mind sharing some of the material that I think we need to discuss. One of the suggestions that in Gordon McIntosh's presentation, one of his two presentations, really grabbed my attention is about how we can possibly improve our committee of the whole meetings. And there was some handouts of that. I have to confess, I need to flush that out about how it works, but one of the things that I think it does do is, if we can fully understand it, is it enables us to have as a council, without committing staff to any work whatsoever, a sort of a free-wheeling discussion around matters of general interest that we can just discuss and do it in the committee of the whole. The other, I've been talking by through email to Jerry Berry. This conference was set up into two parts for newly-elected counselors and for returning. I went to all the returning sessions and you know, our staff has been talking to us about the inadequacies of property tax and went to a very good presentation on taxation, which there was no handout. So I've asked if I could have copies of the graphs, so Jerry Berry is sending them up for me and I wouldn't mind maybe putting that on a committee of the whole meeting in conjunction with how staff sees it can be used as well. It was very powerful and eclipses us with, I think, good information for lobbying for changes to our taxation system. Thank you.
Thank you. Further counselor business? Thank you. Item 3, 3.1, we have our minutes of our regular meeting of council of January 5th, 2015. Counselor McFadden to Counselor Schuman. Is there any errors or omissions in the minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. And 3.2, we have the minutes of our special meeting of council of January 8th for adoption. Counselor Wilbur, seconded Counselor Schuman. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Any business arising out of the minutes? Correspondence? Item 5, we have a letter from Lana Williams, Executive Director from Nowak and Friendship Center, looking for a capacity, community capacity support application. Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move that we send a letter of support in support of the, for the Nowak and Friendship Center in their seat, in their quest to obtain core funding for their programs.
Thank you. Seconded Counselor Schuman. Discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Item 5.2, we have a letter from the Dawson Creek Investors Group, Walk for Memories Committee. Counselor Schuman?
I would move that we find something in our tickle trunk to donate for their silent auction. Maybe we have a jacket or something like that that we could forward to them for their silent auction.
Thank you. Seconded Counselor McFadden. Discussion? Do we need to, we don't need to put a monetary value to that, Jim, in terms of if we're donating an item like that?
I don't even know what we have, Your Worship, but we'll open up the, we'll open up the closet, find what we can.
Thank you. Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Item 5.3, we have a letter from Maria Howard, CEO of the Alzheimer's Society of British Counselor Parslow?
There's a problem here, is they're not referring this through you to staff, that you know, when we make declarations, don't we require that they be somewhat be in attendance?
They've already done it.
I think for a proclamation?
Proclamation, okay.
We're not doing a proclamation.
That's what they're requesting.
They were requesting that?
Well, I read that.
What's that? Oh, so...
Somewhere?
We did, we did. We didn't do the proclamation last week for the local group?
Thank you, okay. When they, us, yeah.
Because it's the month of January. Counselor Schuman?
So I would be interested in having them come as a delegation, just to find out, like I'm not exactly sure what it would take to become a dementia-friendly community. I'm not sure what that entails, I'm not sure which bylaws or policies we might adjust in order to accommodate people with dementia. So I think that if we could invite them as a delegation, that might be informative. So I'd move that we invite them for a delegation.
Thank you. Seconded Counselor Parslow. Discussion? So Counselor Wilbur, it's...
I was just going to say, great idea because I'm right there with Counselor Schuman, I you know, dealt with it on some level personally, but as far as being, you know, accessible-wise, community-wise, I myself don't understand, so I think it'd be awesome to have them here and come and explain that to us.
Perfect. Part of the new roles and hopefully it'll flow from our strategic planning as well as health, as a critical arm of the future of our planning and so this fits right into there in my view, so great idea. Ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Item 5.4, we have a letter from Kit Fast, curator of the Community Relations Dawson Creek Art Gallery. Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move that a special occasion permit for the art gallery be approved for February 6th, 2015, for their exhibition ambition.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. So rocking right along and we're a little ahead of our delegation, so we'll move to 7. 7.1, reports, report from 15007 from our Chief Financial Officer in regards to our gaming Counselor Parslow?
I move that report number 15-007 from the CFO, the gaming report, December 31st, 2040, we received and approved as presented.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Item 7.2, we have a report number 15006 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding a boundary extension request from Wayne Kerry Hansen.
It's taking forever to load.
Yes. I'm finally loading.
Can you move it?
I'll move it if you read it out.
I don't have the words yet.
It's not here yet either.
No.
It's a big one, maps and all.
I support it, but I don't know what it is now, I've read it. Still coming up.
No, is it?
Still coming up.
It's still turning.
Yeah. I spoke to you, sir.
Maybe time for coffee.
Well, Your Worship, I would move the recommendation from staff. We don't have it to read it out, but if anyone is that interested, they could inquire later as to the details of the recommendation.
Sure, Brenda?
I can read it out.
All right, thank you.
The report number 15-006 from the Director of Corporate Administration, Rehanson Boundary Extension Request, 2015-01. Did you want to go ahead then?
Keep on going.
Be received, further that the application be approved for inclusion of the properties legally described below in the city's municipal boundaries for the purpose of having land available for future development. Further that the applicant be requested to provide a servicing feasibility report prior to the required consultation and further that should servicing be reported as feasible, that administration be authorized to develop, sign and submit the proposal to the provincial government.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Wilbur, moved by Counselor McFadden. So discussion, comments? Counselor Rogers?
It's two properties and I was thinking about it here the other night, should that not be put on to two different applications? Is this not like double dipping? Because we're talking about two properties, so shouldn't it be under two applications? Because I might want to support one, but not the other one?
Brenda?
Through Your Worship, I was just going to add that the province prefers to have both applications received at the same time.
Because I think the process as we move forward is, there's the servicing issues, there's with the Minister of Municipal Affairs or Community, that are we going to support, the ALR have to deal with it. So there's all those components that have to be dealt with and supported before we can even say that we're going to allow it to come in. Brenda?
Yeah, and as far as costs, it costs the same to the cities in regards to advertising for one property as for two. It's the advertising that takes a lot of the $500 fee and it's just more feasible for the applicant if they can combine their two properties into one.
I think at this point, it's an approval in principle that we're giving to the request from the applicant that we're going to, we are willing to consider bringing it into the city boundaries and then the process begins for them, advertising, the servicing. Jim?
Yeah, through Your Worship, council should be aware that council doesn't have the ultimate decision in this, the citizens do. This has to go to elector approval, so it's ultimately the citizens that decide whether you expand or not, if you put it before them. You can elect not to put it before them, but if you elect to carry through the process, it'll ultimately be the citizens.
Thank you. Further questions? Comments? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Item 7.3, we have report number 15-010 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding our 2015 strategic planning. Counselor Parslow?
I move that report number 15-010 from the Director of Corporate Administration, where 2015 strategic planning session be received. Further that a special meeting close to the public pursuant to Section 91K negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provision of a municipal service, though at their preliminary stages, and 91L discussions with municipal officers and employees respecting the municipal objectives, measures and progress reports be scheduled for January 26th, 5 to 9 p.m. and January 27th, 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. at the Calvin Crutch Center for the Arts. Further, that a representative from the Banff School of Business Community Leaders Program be authorized to attend.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Counselor Schuman? Discussion? Counselor Parslow?
Well, just, it's maybe self-evident, but we're a new council, we have four years to look at each other and hopefully we'll be looking at each other with a very clear purpose in mind and I'm hoping that we'll get a vision for the four years from the point of view of what we hope to accomplish and that is reflecting what we have beyond that. So I'm hoping that we're going to be in the headspace for long-term focus, yeah. Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. And I, so for me, the, I think our role as a board and governance and leadership is trying to define that vision of our community, of what we want it to be in the future in that 10 or 15 or 20 years, whatever that timeframe is, and provide clarity around how we want to define that for our community so that people see that from us. I think, I had a guy, a guy, a leader I really respect at one time said, creating a vision so clear that people can almost taste it is a sign of really great leadership. And to me, when we all, for all of us, see that and have that alignment of where we're going, what we want this community to be in the long-term and the strategy, the strategic section, to me gives us that opportunity to have that conversation. I think it also aligns council in the future as well in terms of all of us making the decisions we make on a day-to-day basis, give us that clarity in terms of what it is we're doing and why we make the decisions we do, leading us to that end goal. So really pleased about having the opportunity to spend a day and a half to be able to try to reach some alignment with that. And as we have the delegation from the Banff School of Business, as supported by Encana, to be able to have a representative there and anything that flows from there might be the opportunity then that we lock into an issue or a component that we now can ask our leadership, build a leadership capacity within our community from citizens. I just think it's a great opportunity and I'm really happy they're willing to do it, so appreciate council support. Further questions? Comments? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Item 7.4, we have a report number 15-011 from the Director of Development Services regarding transportation of dangerous goods. Counselor Wilbur?
I will make the motion that report number 15-011 from the Director of Development Services regarding transportation of dangerous goods through the city be received and referred to the February 16th Committee of the Whole Agenda as a discussion item.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman. Counselor Rogers?
Is there somebody that we can have from the Ministry of Transportation? Because I did note that there is, they have a problem going through, I call it the snake pits. That's why some of the big trucks don't want to be using that route. Is there any way we can have Ministry of Transportation look at that to maybe straighten that out or put a bridge in to make it safer to bring the, to have those vehicles be safer for them to be going through that area?
Sure, absolutely. Should they not attend that? Yeah, and you know, I had a meeting with Mike Bernier and the Ministry of Highways about two weeks or three weeks ago in regards to some of the pedestrian safety issues that were raised in the community along 8th Street and crossings and things like that. Mike invited me to attend that session with him and one of the things the highways guys that were there talked about was the, they're getting the highway to, the twinning from here to Pousdon and that snake pit road, the long-term view of that. We're starting to see more traffic on the Imperial Access Road north of town, getting from Alaska Highway out to the Rolla Road somehow. So I think it's a really good opportunity for us to engage with the Ministry of Highways and MLA Bernier to talk about that. Jim?
Through Your Worship, so the only direction we have from council was to investigate and get this information back to you and the information basically is that there is no designated dangerous goods route. It's a discretionary choice for a driver of dangerous goods, whether they go around the community or through it. The reason we're suggesting putting it to committee of the whole is so that you could decide internally whether you wish to do anything about that. I don't think it's a good idea to meet with Ministry of Transportation when council hasn't decided whether they would rather the traffic went around or went through.
Good point. So further discussion? Counselor Schuman?
So perhaps we should just have the committee of the whole conversation, a little chin wag as Gordon McIntosh likes to say, about this issue and sort of come to a consensus if we can on, you know, what our thoughts are before we involve the ministry.
Sure. Good. Counselor Parslow?
Notwithstanding that matter, I would think that we need to sometime engage in the sort of broader understanding of what's planned because we did get a presentation, the last council, on that twinning and its interface with this non-official dangerous goods route that we want maybe to have as an official one. And I understand that those plans have changed, maybe I've missed something here, but sometime I think it's good to have some update of what's going on and other related issues and what their plans are to mitigate those.
Okay, so we'll move it forward on this basis and have that conversation and then plug it forward in terms of how we see the impacts to the entire process for us. Good. All those, sorry, are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah. Could that, we don't have a discussion internally of course, but subsequent to that, can we diarize perhaps this broader discussion around the matters I've raised and Counselor Rogers has raised?
Sure. Can we put that forward after the committee of the whole for further conversation about the transportation issues as it relates to inside the community and the bypass issues for transportation of goods around our community?
Absolutely, Your Worship.
Good.
You need to put, place on diary, you need a motion.
Counselor Parslow? Seconded Counselor Schuman? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. We're close enough to nine, I'd like to move to our delegations at this time and so we have Heather Quarle from Starbrite Farm and Buttery Bites Caramels are in attendance with her request. So, oh, good morning. Good morning, Heather.
Oh, she's got a bag.
So, Counselor...
Let us distribute that as well.
My guess would be...
No, no, we're totally up for Brad's review.
I'm going to guess caramel bites. I'm going to guess caramel bites, yeah.
Passive alarm, actually.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the floor is yours. Welcome.
Hi. So what I wanted to ask this morning is permission to be able to use a portion of the city of the Dawson Creek logo or the Mile Zero post to be able to add a little label to my product that says "A Taste of Dawson Creek."
Yeah. He's being a hunk.
You started a fight.
Sorry.
That usually happens, sorry. I do have a very popular product, we are selling our product in town already and I just think that something that could be of appeal to tourists, because people are looking for local stuff. And so I think that, I don't know, I just, a good idea. I think it's a great idea to put something on the product that says "It's made right here." Yes. And by "right here" I mean seven minutes across the border in Bay Tree, yes.
And we consider you community, just so you know.
Okay, good. I do also, yes, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Ah, you can do it.
What, I can speak on the side of my mouth.
You've finished chewing.
Oh, right out of the side of your mouth.
You know, I think there's a very good point underlying this, you know, there was a lot of work with branding the piece. Why not brand Dawson Creek if there's local products and stuff like that and make it available to whoever, you know, whatever. We need to keep some handle on it that has been, but I think the concept of branding the community is a very good one.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
So through you to staff, I know there's some parameters with our logo, does that extend to the Mile Zero post as well? The icon of the Mile Zero post?
Through Your Worship, your policy on your logo is that it won't be used for commercial purposes, but you have the copyright on the Mile Zero post and you can use it as you wish. The second version with the Mile Zero post is the, you could grant that without violating your logo use policy.
Counselor Schuman?
Sorry. I think it's a wonderful idea and I love your candies and I think that whenever we can put the city of Dawson Creek onto something as fabulous as this, it's all good. So I guess we'll look at under mayor's business and make that decision, but I'm all for it.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur?
I just, I think it's a great idea myself, but I'm thinking after this, I would like to talk to you because we do have our small... to talk to you, because we do have our Small Town Love program that we're gonna get involved in, and I think that would perfectly suit what you're doing. So, I'll talk to you about that afterwards.
That sounds good. Yes, I haven't heard about that, yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Further questions? The only question I have through to administration or to Heather is, do we have to be specific in terms of how and what we allow to use it for, in terms of the parameters for that request? And so, I'm good with, I like the idea of this, like council has, but where do we extend it to? And do we put parameters around the extension for the use of it? I guess is my question.
After my involvement with the branding of the piece, and seeing the huge, long-drawn-out waste of money, no, don't complicate it, please. And if it comes down to complicating it, we will be proceeding with Plan C, which does not require your blessing. Okay? I'm not up for another branding of the piece. If you don't know the background on it, please find out, because it, I won't be doing it again. Okay? I want simple. I'm an entrepreneur, which means I'll have it done tomorrow, okay? I'm not going to be waiting on a lot of political, "Do we allow this? Don't we allow that?" You know? It's, we don't have time for that. The tourist season is coming up, we want to act on it right now.
Yeah, no, my question was, just to ensure what, we know what we're gonna be using and allowing the use of the logo for.
Yeah, and then I guess that's between you, but you know, if this drags out for weeks, I'll just proceed with Plan C, and it'll just say, "A Taste of Dawson Creek, BC."
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Javecov?
Just a question through to administration. Is there any liability connected with this, or is it, like if we add our logo, does that imply that we're approving the quality of the product, or is it just simply a notice that this product, whether good or bad, is named Dawson Creek, or connected to Dawson Creek?
Jim?
Through your worship, it's exactly those kind of concerns that have led to your logo use policy, which might imply that the corporation was endorsing the product in some way. Frankly, under copyright, what happens is, you can grant the permission, or you can also decide not to do anything about somebody infringing on your copyright. We happen to have a pizza place right now downtown, calling itself Mile Zero Pizza, using the likeness of the Mile Zero post. It would be the other way around. We would have to take positive action to enforce our copyright, which I doubt if council's gonna wish me to spend money doing so. In this case, you're, you know, it's a copyrighted image that you're allowing the use of, it doesn't apply anything beyond that.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
I have vivid memories of the point Heather's talking about, but I understand your concern as well, but we didn't talk about that maybe under Mayor's business, but we've got to have a propensity for action, as far as I'm concerned. But you have some point, though.
Thank you.
I'm sure we can accommodate it one way or the other.
Any further question? Heather, thank you. We appreciate you coming in. We'll bring it back under Mayor's business, and deal with it under that, at that time.
Thank you, and I'll leave this one for the people in the back.
Thank you.
Thanks for the candies.
So, we'll move back into our reports, and we have report number 7-5, report number 15-005 from the Director of Development Services regarding the development permit application 15-01 for Adonte Holdings, Melanie Inn, the Southwest Corner Section. I don't have it.
I don't have it either.
I got it.
You got it.
I got it. I move that report number 15-005 from the Director of Development Services, RE, development permit application from Adonte Holdings be received. Further, that development permit number 15-01 for the development of a 220-lot subdivision in the Southwest Corner Section, 23 Township 78, Range 15, west of the Sixth Meridian, be authorized in principle, and issued upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period, and receipt of required financial security of $25,000, and an assessment report from a qualified environmental professional verifying that there will be no adverse impacts to the natural features in the riparian management area, and if so, identifies measures that it will protect the riparian management area from the proposed development.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Parslow. Discussion? Counselor McFadden?
I'm having some trouble bringing this up on my screen, but I thought we dealt with this. Is this one that we dealt with last meeting, that we denied the request, or is this another one?
So, we dealt with the request to move the RM1 area and increase it from 4.5 hectares to almost five, I think. And it was to move that RM1 zoning over. This is not in any way changing the current zoning of the property as it exists today.
Jim?
Yes, through your worship, the previous request was a rezoning application, which you refused to take to public hearing this. And in response to that, the owners have decided to proceed with the current zoning. However, because the property touches on a riparian area, you need to give a development permit to allow their conceptual site plan, after which they'll have to apply for subdivision approval, after which, for the multiple density, they'll need development permits for each specific construction project. Basically, what they have done is establish a forested buffer along the south area of their property, and along the west area of their property. And their development will be beyond that. It will be buffered from the existing homes with forested greenbelt, basically. That's their, and that also protects the riparian areas. So, this is their response to the riparian area protection.
Thank you.
And so, this property is probably one of the few major development areas we have that's zoned RS1, specifically RS1, with the minimal amount of RM1 that exists in it with the plans to develop seniors. And I've met with the developer on it, and had that conversation. I saw the plans, as we all have, and really, to me, to see the opportunity of having, and there it is up there, the RM1, or the RS1, having a really, the development of is real, what I think is gonna be a really nice, single-family residential area. I'm excited about to be able to see it come into play, so.
Jim?
Okay, so through your worship, at the moment, every one of those RS1 homes can have a suite in them, subject to your decision after your public hearing tonight. Your decision tomorrow will decide whether it's what you're talking about, or whether it is single-family with suites.
Yeah. Further discussion? Counselor Rogers?
Yeah, I was, I know that this is gonna end up coming up sooner or later. I do applaud them for putting the buffer against those houses that are along, I think it's 94th and 6th. The only thing that I have noticed in that drawing is the traffic flow pattern that is gonna be going through there. I would encourage the developer to review that, because the traffic flow from the subdivision looks to me like it's gonna be coming out all along Sixth Street, and that would go down to, I believe it's 95th. And I know that, that there was an application for a streetlight at 95th and 8th at one point.
96th.
96th and 8th, I think, and that was denied. But I just look at, look at the problems that are gonna arise from the traffic flowing through the neighborhoods. I'm in favor of issuing the development permit, but I just would like to advise the developer that there will be a lot of feedback regarding the traffic that's gonna be flowing in and out of that neighborhood, and reminding them that there are a lot of, that there will be a lot of truck traffic over the next few years going through those neighborhoods. And by the looks of it, everything flows down Sixth Street, and from when I was there talking to neighbors here, previous to this coming back, I noticed that the Sixth Street, if they're gonna have that much traffic flowing out of there, there will be no on-street parking, otherwise it would just be too dangerous. So, I would advise them, if they can find another way of getting traffic out of that neighborhood, I would expect feedback from the investors, and the, actually, the residents that live along there.
Then, so looking at the design, Third Street blocks, because it goes into Sandus, it ends at Ted Sandus property on Third, so you, the only way to get in is around 96th up at the top end, and from the bottom end, you can't go into Sixth, or onto 95th, I think it is, because that ends into Curtis's property, and into the laneway. So, the only option is along, I think it's Sixth Street?
It's Sixth, yeah.
Up in.
Jim?
Okay, so, just to advise council, these are decisions the approving officer makes. They're not council decisions. And council can't review or change the decisions of the approving officer. You can just change the approving officer. That whole, until you get one that does, closer to what you would like. That whole pawed area in there, because there is no, the city limits end, and there's no property acquisition to have any north-south access, that is, to the east of this development. This development borders up to our boundaries. When it's fully built out, the concept is traffic can get to 95th and 8th three ways, through Sixth Street, from the north on 90th, from the south on 95th. But you get to 95th and 8th, all of the traffic there gets to 95th and 8th if it's going south, just like all the traffic from your subdivision, your worship, gets to 95th and 8th. 95th and 8th carries all of that traffic from both sides of Eighth Street, until you are low enough down, that 15th is your connector. And so, it's no question, this is going to increase traffic generally on that intersection, for sure.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
So, when we did our master transportation plan through Mayor to staff, these future subdivisions were considered?
Yes, they were.
Thank you.
Counselor Wilber?
I was gonna actually mention the master transportation plan too, but I think, Jim, do you not mean 96 is the third?
Oh, sorry, 96, yes.
And I think part of that master transportation plan was that streetlights were gonna be looked at in the future on 96, given the extra traffic that would come from development. So, I think it has been addressed, and staff's adhering to that plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry. Thank you. So, we're nine fifteen. Do you wanna take a quick five or 10-minute break? Or do you wanna keep going? Your call.
We've only got one more report here, 7-6, and then we could...
So, item 7-6, we have report number 15-009 from the Director of Development Services regarding the update on our water quality risk assessment study. Counselor Schuman?
I'd move that report number 15-009 from the Director of Development Services regarding the update on the water quality risk assessment study be received. Further, that council directs staff to include $5 million for the treated water reservoir project in the 2015 capital budget. And further, that staff also be authorized to proceed with the piloting and design of water treatment technologies during 2015, to assist with the determination of what upgrades to the water treatment plant to increased capacity will be proposed in 2016. And finally, that staff be directed to present the final report from USL Urban Systems at a future meeting prior to the Build Canada Fund grant application deadline of February 18th, to allow council the opportunity to identify the reservoir project as its designated priority project for application to the Build Canada Fund.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Parslow. Discussion? Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of this proposal. It's in line with past decisions of council as a result of shorewater discussions with the community. I just note with interest, and I just wonder if staff have any comments about it, the urban system uses a population growth factor of 2.5%. And I, my recollection is the past discussions show that whilst there have been these, these figures, that in fact, our growth is closer to 1%. And I'm just wondering, I can't remember if it's under 1, or just at 1, or just above 1. I'm all for them using the 2.5, because I'd rather have excess capacity than less. So, I'm not speaking against that. That's their call, but I just wonder where they got that idea from.
Jim?
Through your worship, when you worked through the development cost charge, some of you at the table worked through the development cost charge initiative, at that time, 2% was being used, again, for, it was above historical numbers, but again, for that margin of safety, you used 2%, and that's what went to the provincial government. The urban systems is cognizant of the fact that the council of Dawson Creek often talks about how we're on the cusp of growth. And so, somewhere between our historical patterns, and the figures that council sometimes throws out, like 10% growth in the next year, or we're going to be 20,000, or, you know, those numbers, somewhere in between is the safe margin for the water. So, they've actually opted from 2 to 2.5, trying to keep a safe buffer, so that there is, the system's not obsolete before it's built.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Thanks, Jim, but what is, what is historical figure in the last few years, Jim? Just, I just lost...
Depends on how long you go back. If you go a lot back far enough, it's negative.
No, for the last five years or so.
About one.
About one.
On average.
Counselor Rogers?
I think if we're gonna move forward as a community, and develop and grow, we've already had indications that our water treatment facility is becoming inadequate and stressed at times. So, I really think that we should move forward with this, and secure a reliable water source for our future.
So, just to point out, highlight from the report, the two projects that are identified as first-in-line, for the first year, the new treated reservoir that would provide additional fire flows, protection, fire protection to downtown, but also fire protection to allow the Hanson Lands across from the OBC Hydro building to develop, and then the water treatment plant upgrades the following year with the connections to the two reservoirs. That work, if we can successfully get Build Canada funding, the 1/3rd, 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 council has their 3rd already in reserves, so there's no necessity for borrowing or for additional process for electoral approval. So, we are literally shovel-ready in that regard with those projects, which is one of the things that the MP was suggesting would be beneficial to the application.
Thank you. Counselor Javecov?
I was just wondering what the piloting refers to. I thought that you would have standard treatment procedures for various qualities of water. So, I'm just curious on what that would...
Well, I can stumble through an explanation, or better yet, I turn it over to Kevin, who actually knows what he's talking about.
You're right, there's standard treatment procedures, but there's various suppliers, vendors, manufacturers of those treatments. So, if you go with a membrane filtration, for instance, there'll be a number of manufacturers that build that. So, what we want to do is pilot those appropriate treatments to various vendors, and find out what is the most efficient, run through a process, and pick one that seems to make the most sense for our water.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
I just have to make a comment about the Build Canada Fund. I mean, the consensus in Richmond was this, this is just a woefully inadequate amount of money for all the projects, and a lack of attention to infrastructure. And everyone seems to be throwing the hat in for the fund, realizing that it's just a very small percentage of what is actually... a very small percentage of what is actually needed. So I wouldn't hold too much hope out, but we should try to get it. But we may have to revisit this, how we're going to get the funding, in reality, because it's just not, the money's not there. Hundred and ten million or something, isn't it?
Our reserve currently exists for the water utility around, I think, six or seven million?
Yes.
And so, clearly, I honestly, when I saw the report on five million for this initial work, I was surprised, because I thought it was going to be a lot more than that for this first stages. And so I think if we can demonstrate, we've got the engineering and the project ready, we've got our one-third available, it really will get us in the lineup with the federal government. And certainly, Bob, MP Zimmer's been very supportive. So let's get in and make sure that we're there for this first component of it. And then, as administration have recommended, get the process in place for phase two of our treatment facility and get that ready for 2016, because we knew going in, we wouldn't be able to get it all done in one year.
Counselor Jevetkov?
Just another question regarding the population of the city. You know, we've heard various numbers, anywhere from 11,000 up to 15,000-plus. Has anyone in administration done a sort of a calculated guess on going by the properties, taxable properties in town and kind of estimating, you know, an average number of people per property and that type of thing? You know, it seems to me that if you have that information, you could get a fairly, you know, a number that's better than 11,000 to 15,000.
Sure. Jim?
Through your worship, we don't do any internal census. Some communities do, we don't. So we've relied on StatsCan census. The, it's a specialized field of work. If you guys want to explore that, I can get you a quote on somebody to do an accurate internal census.
Counselor Schuman?
Through you to staff, I thought I saw somewhere, I can't remember why I read it, we were, we sort of had a guesstimate based upon water usage. Was there a number recently somewhere that...
Well, one of the things...
Just a guesstimate, it was.
One of the things we have done is estimated use per person in the community of water use. But our figures, using census and doing that, don't add up to national standards for amount of use. So you can, you can work it either way. You can say, we're doing something different than anyone else for use, or you can say, we must be doing the same thing, so we'll use that division to tell us how many people there are in the community. All of these things are wild-ass guesses. There's no science to this at all. There's no science to predicting what we're going to be. Is LNG going to go? Is Site C going, or are the, are the court cases going to hold it back? If both of those go, what's the population to us going to be? This is, this is why it depends on your optimism. Like, you sat at the shorewater, you heard old Les Brundage saying, you know what? When he came to town in the 50s, he was told the community was going to be 20,000 overnight, and it was 10 when he arrived, and it's pretty much 10 now. So if you look at our historical trends, there's no basis for the optimism. The optimism is based around the evidence of your current census. I don't know how you have parking problems with pickup trucks everywhere if there's nobody driving that pickup. I mean, clearly, somebody must have driven it there or left it there. So, you know, there's, there's work that could be done, but it would be expensive to do.
Thank you. Counselor Jevetkov?
So I guess I'm reading into that, that this number from Urban Systems, 12,630, is a wild-ass guess, to put it in Jim's terms.
True. That's true. It's an estimate based on more optimism than historical trends.
Just good.
Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, our colleagues to the north of us, Fort St. John, discussions with them, their council, councillors, not the mayor, but the council members, their population estimates much larger swing than ours. Again, they just have no firm, firm idea of it. I think the water usage, it was, that Counselor Schuman made mention of, was interesting, but of course, you notice in this report that there was, I may be using the wrong words here, so do correct me, staff, there was a significant leap detected in, was it February of 2014? And Urban Systems corrected their figures to reflect that, but who knows what other leaps are there. So anyway, I think we, Stats Canada has a figure for Dawson Creek. We know there's a shadow population. I don't think it's, I think there's, the base figure of 12,000, whatever it is, is not that much more than the Stats Canada last census. And so I think it's a reasonable base to extrapolate from. And so I'm, as someone else has said, overcapacity's better than undercapacity.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers?
Yes, your worship. With, if we don't get the Build Canada funding, where are we going to get the rest of the funding for, for this project?
So, we do have the water reserve, I'm going to say, I think it's six or seven million dollars in the water reserve?
Yeah, through your worship, the water capital is about seven...
Point-two, right now.
So if we get one-third, one-third, one-third on the $5 million project, our one-third is 1.75 million, we have that in cash in our reserve. If the treatment plant next year is 7 million or 10 million, and our one-third is 3 million, we have the cash in our reserve for that. We haven't done anything with the water utility over the last two or three years in terms of capital, because we were going through, all the city was going through that shorewater campaign. And as a result of that water utility, through the sale of water, all the different things was continuing to build. And so we're in the position where we do have our one-third available for today or the future. And if we don't get one-third, and the project is $5 million for this first phase, then we have that in our utility to pay that. And then council can make the decision as to whether we're going to pay it out of the utility, or if we're going to borrow a portion of it, or that's our, our funding source then, we would determine once we approve the capital project.
Thank you.
The, I'm sure that there's some folks would find it therapeutic to continue to guess and analyze our population needs in the future. For us, I think we, what we're doing is anticipating the growth of our community. We need to see the ability to be able to support that growth through that core piece of water. The pinch points right now are that reservoir to be able to provide the fire protection and our treatment plant. And I think it's for us to be able to go forward now and start to get that in place for our community is such a critical component. I think it's our number-one priority, my own opinion.
Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I'm right with you. There, just another comment about population, in the school district, their population projections. I mean, the school district right now is about half of what it was when I was store superintendent.
BC Business just...
Where the kids, so where, so there are people coming here, they're not having children.
They're not bringing...
It's, it's a very complicated thing, yet you do see all this new development and stuff. So the family constitutions or compositions must be changed rapidly, or we've got a lot of single people here.
So this absolutely gives us the first stages and steps in terms of getting it ready and getting us ready for that Build Canada Fund application on February 18th. Counselor Jevetkov?
Obviously, everybody here has read a lot more into my question than what I intended. All I asked was simply, has anyone in the city done a kind of a calculated guess? That was the question. So I've got...
I would think everyone has.
Way more answer than I intended. But it's all appreciated. I guess discussion is good.
Urban Systems did.
Counselor Parslow?
The answer to Counsel Jevetkov's question was given, it was a flat-ass no.
Exactly. Yes or no?
But, but the issue of population is very, very important. So I would consider, you put it on a positive spin, Counsel Jevetkov, that we're sharing information with you, so you have the same information we have.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers?
It doesn't really matter what the population is right now. This work needs to be done right now. That's just my opinion. Actually, that's several reports that we've had in the past. That is the opinion of those reports, that we upgrade our system and apply the storage rule.
Yeah, the commercial, commercial development that's going on out west, as well as potentially, we've allowed, we've supported the request from Loyzal and the other Shiptons to pull that property out. So because of the anticipated amount of commercial development, we need to be prepared to support that. They say the development comes and population follows from that, so great point.
Question?
Question.
All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you.
Let's talk about population.
That was easy.
So we're going to take, we'll take a five-minute, 10-minute break, and adjourn for a few minutes. Meeting, and our item eight bylaws, eight-point-one, we have our council procedure amendment, bylaw number four-two-five-three, for consideration of adoption.
Counselor McFadden moves. Counselor Schuman second. Discussion. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you.
Item nine, mayor's business. I'd ask, the notification came for FCM and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities meeting, we got the notification of the meeting. This year, for 2015, it's in Edmonton. Council policy in regards to attendance of the FCM is that the mayor and two councillors are authorized, under the current policy, to attend. And last year was in, I think Niagara Falls. All of the council had been to the FCM last year, the councillors, and those that hadn't, chose not to go. And so we didn't have anyone attend. I wasn't able to go because of conflict with some conference I was attending in Vancouver. So this year, it is in Edmonton, and certainly, I'm going to drive over this year to attend, because I haven't been to the FCM as the mayor of the city. But I wanted to raise it with council, because it is close enough that, and it's by lot, so it's by draw who would attend this year. And so I wanted to raise it, the policy in terms of, what's your feelings in terms of having two people attend, or you want to change that?
Counselor Schuman?
So I was looking at it. So we've got four FCMs in this term, correct? So I was thinking, being that it's right there in Edmonton, why not just open this one up to everybody and then draw names for the next three, two councillors and the mayor for the next three? Because I was wondering how we're going to do that with regards to having four of them, like how we're going to, how we're going to, what are we going to do with that? So if we open this one up, because I think it's slightly more reasonably priced to trot off to Edmonton...
Right.
Than it is Niagara Falls, et cetera, et cetera. And then that would give everyone the opportunity, who hasn't been, an opportunity to attend one that's close to home for a more reasonable price, and then moving forward with the draw for the other ones. And that would give them the opportunity to actually know whether they wanted to attend or not. Because I don't think Counsel McFadden's attended, Counsel Shea, Wilbur, I don't think has. I have, of course, Rogers hasn't, and I don't know what Paul has ever done, but I think maybe just having everyone have the ability, not to say that everyone will, but...
And I guess that was my point of reasoning, because I don't think we'd ever get an FCM that'll be closer to our community than Edmonton. So if people want to go, then at least that way you can go on a reasonable cost for us and then versus St. John's or something like that.
Take a road trip.
Yeah.
Fun road trip.
What's your, what's your pleasure?
Counselor Jevetkov?
You know, I can go along with having one person attend, but I don't see any tangible benefits to the city. And just to go to see what it's like, I don't think that's wise spending for the city. And there is a cost, wherever it is, there's still a cost. So, you know, if there was some tangible benefits to the city that could be demonstrated, you know, I would maybe reconsider, but I, I've never seen any. And I know that we've had councillors and mayors go to FCMs before, and it's pretty hard to pin down anything, any actual benefit to the city of Dawson Creek.
Counselor Schuman?
Have you ever attended a FCM, Paul?
No.
Okay. I'd make the motion that all of council be allowed to attend this one, and then do the draw for the two councillors and the mayor for the following three. I'd make that as a motion.
Move. Second? Wilber? Discussion. Counselor Parslow?
I, I wonder about making a decision about attendance for the FCM without seeing the focus, the agenda, the items for discussion.
It's online.
For the Edmonton one? Yeah. Well, I haven't seen it, so I am saying I'm not willing to make any decisions about it because I haven't seen the name. But again, I think, I mean, like I, the way I feel about the LGA I've just attended, I got lots of benefit out of that. And again, that's somewhat of an individual basis as well. And some people may have a particular area they're interested in, and if there's some alignment, fine, but there has to be, to me, some benefit. So I suppose Counsel Schuman's motion is leaving it open to whoever, you know, to make that decision, yeah, on reflection, so.
Jim?
It is closed, so that's...
Thank you.
No, that's all I was going to say, is that the, the motion isn't a prison. It doesn't require anybody to go there, it just opens it up to any of you who wished.
And I guess that was my point of bringing it, because we do have a policy, and it says say that the mayor and two councillors would attend by lot. I just thought, to be able to drive, for us to drive to Edmonton versus flying, or flying to Niagara Falls and St. John's, New Brunswick, or Halifax, or Toronto, or something like that. And to the point about, if we are planning to go, we should at least notify our administration to get some of that details registered and hotels and all that, because it will be busy and all that. So that was just my purpose of bringing it up when the staff brought it to me, so.
When is this?
June 3rd, 4th, and 5th, in that timeframe, maybe 5th to 8th or something like that.
First week of June.
Counselor Rogers?
Yeah, after just attending the LGLA, I found it very beneficial for me. As far as the CFM goes...
FCM.
I, FCM, sorry, I'm not 100% sure on what I'm going to be learning there or anything like that. I guess that'll be, that'll come forward soon enough anyways, or I could do some more investigating. I think that knowledge is very important as an individual and as the representative of Dawson Creek. I think that it's very important that we be informed on what other municipalities are doing. And it's always beneficial to make contacts and engage with other people that are doing the same job that we are.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor McFadden?
We all support the motion as is, and then I think we can individually find out what it's all about. It's like Counselor Rogers says, that if it's going to be of some benefit, then we can go. If not, then we don't have to go.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for your question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
You know, I just got one other quick item I want to raise, and then, last week, I also attended the local government leadership academy sessions in Richmond, and, so there were two or three things that I also, I found very, very beneficial in terms of the financial planning, and I got an idea I'm going to explore with the CFO at some point. I'm not telling the CAO about it yet.
Secret meeting.
But, you know, we sat in on the planner out of North Vancouver, in a session that he facilitated, and Counsel Rogers and I, did you sit in on that one? Were you with him in that one? Yeah. And it was really, really, to me, educational in terms of getting somebody that's been through a significant growth, lots of challenges over the 30 or 40 or 50 years that they've gone through from a... And so to me, that was the benefit to me, and so I met with the fellow afterwards, had a great conversation with him, and I got some ideas in terms of some things that, as we're talking about planning and what we're going through with our community, and I got some contact information from him and talked to him about, you know what, we got a, even, we got a planning position open here, and you know anybody? And so just from that perspective alone, it was really, really beneficial to me in terms of being able to be there. So I just wanted to raise that, that I also attended, was there, and I thought it was, there were some very, very good sessions.
Counselor...
Councillor Parzl?
Yeah, you also did a lot of other things as well for the city. This, did the, did North Vancouver share that presentation, the thing that councillor McFadden and I picked up at the UBCM, their, their policy of, uh, that the, how far they've moved along to emulate the Australian model of budgeting for capital investment?
He didn't get into that as much. It was more of a, uh, introduction to planning in terms of the components you wanna consider and understand, um, you know, the acts, the aspects of planning and considerations of planning that you want to, uh, think about in terms of, and to me, it really emphasized, I think, what Jim's been saying, just, you know, seven or eight months since Jody left and no planner, is there's a specific skill, there's a specific expertise, uh, technical components that I think are so valuable to us in terms of helping guide those decision makings. And it was really good to, to me to sit in on that, uh, conversation.
Further to, to that planner position, I passed this on to Kevin at the hockey game yesterday, and I was talking to the coun, one of the councillors from Fort Nelson, uh, about staffing, and, uh, yeah, they just advertised and quickly got a planner for Fort Nelson out of Montreal. So, that kind of surprised me, go to Fort Nelson, over. So, do we need to send some recruiters to Montreal, I guess?
So that's it for, you know, to councillor-
Oh, wait.
Sorry. Sorry, go ahead, councillor, uh-
I was gonna say, don't forget about our caramel lady.
The candies. We need to talk about the candies.
I will. I just wanted to ask councillor McFadden, do you wanna talk about our meeting in, uh, Rich, in Vancouver with the airport?
Yeah, we met with the president of Hawk Air, uh, in Vancouver on Wednesday, and he's very optimistic, uh, going forward about, uh, uh, what would, may or may not be happening at the airport. He does have the equipment and the manpower, person power to put on perhaps, perhaps two or three flights a day out of here. And, uh, I think going forward, the mayor and I, and he, I don't know if I'll be going, but they may be going to Calgary to talk with some of the top people at Encana, and Murphy, and Shell, if they can, if that can be arranged. But he was very positive and very upbeat, and right now, their loads are, uh, good, considering it's January, he said, so. But he was very upbeat and, uh, and positive about what the future may hold for more, for more service into our local airport.
So, you know, as a, as a comment he made, and he's now got a trip to Calgary this week, or next week, I think-
Yeah.
Um, and he's meeting with one of the presidents of the company that were here at our roundtable, um, that he made contact with, and he's following it up, and he wanted to, they wanted to have a conversation with him, and so he's meeting with him. And he asked me if we could go over, and I would, uh, take him over, because he said, if he could get, uh, the commitment from the industry folks. I use the example, and I talked to the Encana guys, and, uh, a number of months ago, last summer, I think, and they said, you know, every day we got probably four, or five, six people flying in and out of Grand Prairie, coming to Dawson Creek, and, and so we're gonna go and meet with the, uh, industry folks. Because he said, if I could get the commitment from the industry folks, that they have that kind of traffic, uh, he said, we'd have a Calgary flight tomorrow. So, that's so encouraging to me, to be able to open those, uh, relationships and contacts, and hopefully as a benefit to our community. And we're gonna do that. So him and I are gonna schedule a trip to Calgary.
And he doesn't need, he says, a lot of infrastructure improvement out there. He's happy with five thousand feet. We might wanna smarten up the terminal a little bit, you know, throw a coat of paint here, and throw a whole, some paint there, and maybe, uh, do a little better work in, uh, getting the parking lots cleared in the winter. But other than that, he's not looking forward, or expecting a great amount of money to be invested in the facility.
Anyway, it was a good, it was a good interaction, and appreciate Terry setting that up, councillor McFadden setting that up, and we had a good session. Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, I appreciated, um, the young fellow from Hawk Air at that roundtable, uh, talking about, you know, the communities that had gone out and built it because they would come and found out that they didn't come, and, and they're able to increase their, uh, numbers, even with the smaller planes. And, so, you know, some communities have gone out and put out huge amounts of money to build this big fabulous long runway, and in the end, it hasn't been utilized. So, I, I thought that that was, and we've heard that before, um, from others. So, I, I appreciated him saying that.
Yeah, it was very encouraging. And, uh, so we're excited about kinda building that relationship with them further, and with our industry folks that are in here. Thanks for that, councillor McFadden. Um, buttery bites?
Oh.
Councillor Schuman?
Um, so, given the, um, restrictions or whatever around our logo, I would move that we give her permission for, to use the Mile Zero Post icon.
Thank you. Secretary councillor Wilber, discussion?
I think it goes right hand in hand with our Small Town Love project that we're gonna be undertaking, and, um, it's a unique way to brand local products and promote them, so.
Yeah, no, and so, my only comment was, I, I completely agree. I think it's a great idea. I really like and support it, but I just wanna make sure that we have, what, are we just using it for, is it just on these bags, or is it on some other products? Are we giving it to her for anything else that is produced? And, and that's the only parameters I was just, wasn't sure of. Councillor Schuman?
I just think it's really nice she actually came and asked. I mean, I think there's all sorts of people out there that are using the Mile Zero Post icon in their whatevers. I mean, Jim mentioned the pizza place, which by the way, that pizza's awesome. Um, and, uh, so it's kudos for her for even taking the time to recognize that we may have copyright, we may have policies around the use of it. So, um, I think that, uh, this is, this is perfect. They come and ask, we'll see how wonderful the product is, and we say yay.
Councillor Sch, uh, Wilber?
Well, I would just think that her que, request was to use the logo, so the Mile Zero Post, on her packaging of her locally made products. So, I'm going to then assume that she'll be using it on all of her packaging of her products that are made locally.
Councillor Parzl?
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I, I'm just through to staff, uh, can we require people who wish to use that Mile Zero Post to have it come to council? Or can it be something, uh, that we have really no control over and shouldn't even worry about?
Uh, through your worship, oh, you can control it. You can, um, you can sue them for copyright infringement, right, left, and center, like, say, the Olympics do, uh, and you will be upheld. You have the copyright to them. So, at some cost, uh, taking small business folk to court, um, you can make them remove, uh, that likeness from their stuff.
Councillor Jevatkov?
Um, I like the idea of, of using those logos and stuff as well. I'm just wondering, I'm not clear about the responsibility of the city, if there's any responsibility that's, um, carried forward as a result of having that logo on the product?
Through your worship, again, we're not talking about the logo, we're talking about the likeness of the-
Mile Zero.
Mile Zero Post. Uh, the logo, council developed their own policy about that, because they didn't want it used for commercial purposes, because they didn't want to appear to be endorsing some products, not the other. Uh, you hold the copyright on that, uh, icon of the Mile Zero Post. Uh, you can allow anyone you wish to use it, or you can prohibit everybody use it, using it, and you can, uh, enforce that, uh, through the civil courts, uh, if you find somebody using it who doesn't have your permission. Those are discretionary decisions for council. You're, um, uh, allowing somebody to use your, the likeness of the Mile Zero Post is just that. You're allowing them to use the likeness. It's a, a contained decision.
Thank you. Councillor Wilber?
Oh, I was just gonna say, too, there's a difference between having a graphic logo and a photo that you've taken. The photo is yours personally, if you've taken it, the graphics belongs to whoever owns copyright. So, there is that difference. But I think, in this case, she's just asking to put that it's made locally. Um, perhaps we can, you know, let her know that by no means are we saying we're endorsing her product, even though I'm sure we all enjoyed the caramels that we do. We can let, stipulate that to her, that we are not, by letting her use that Mile Zero Post, um, to say it's locally made, that she knows we're not actually endorsing the product, I think.
Councillor Parzl?
I'll endorse it.
Me too, but...
Yeah, um, I, I thought councillor Jevatkov was really wondering about, uh, the issue of, if we, if we allow it, are we endorsing it? But, uh, I'm just wondering if, uh, we shouldn't consider, after dealing with this motion, uh, having a, a motion that we have people who want to use the Mile Zero logo, uh, come to council, like Heather did, so we, so we know what's going on? Or is that just gonna create a further problem? But that's to be, I just wanna mention that after we dealt with this motion. I mean, maybe just, uh, help people who come through the motion, is just we have to have the question put now, and, uh, move on to other issues related to this.
Good. Any further questions? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry, thank you.
So, a comment from staff, uh, do, do we require people to come here and do like Heather did, or should we just leave it? Let's see what happens?
Well, uh, to make that happen, uh, I'd need a council direction to enforce our copyright protections. Um, I have no idea who's using this, but I could have that searched. Um, and anyone that was, I could have our lawyers send them a very nasty letter indeed, telling them to desist, and to come to council for permission. I know where I'd start, which is the very visible pizza place. Um, yes, it's up to you to decide where staff resources go. If that's where you think they need to go, that's where they can go.
Councillor Wilber?
I, I don't think that's necessary, but I just, and that's why I bring up the follow the example of the pizza places, that's actually that person's photo of the Mile Zero Post downtown. It's not an actual graphic digital file of the Mile Zero Post, so there is a difference. He owns that picture, we don't. But I think a lot of local businesses use the Mile Zero Post. They have since it, it's creation. So, I mean, I, to me, that's a waste of staff time and resources and money. I mean, we're the Mile Zero of the Alaska Highway, and I, I can't think of any business out there that doesn't mention that or brand themselves that way. Uh, we're not letting her use the city logo, she's using the Mile Zero Post. I mean, tons of people use it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councillor Parzl?
I can't help but reflect the fact that the Mile Zero Park Society, uh, asked to, uh, build a replica of the, uh, Mile Zero Post at the RV Park, and, um, that was denied. Um, so essentially, we're okay with two-dimensional representations, but not three-dimensional. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
Uh, no, your worship, that doesn't reflect council's discussion on the Mile Zero. Council's suggestion on the Mile Zero Park was a replica Mile Zero Post, uh, might, uh, have the effect of diverting traffic and people taking pictures from the downtown business to a remote location, the Mile Zero Park. Council said they didn't want to create confusion in the minds of, um, the tourism, traveling population. They wanted to maintain the connection between the iconic Mile Zero Post and flow-through traffic for downtown business. That was counted. It had nothing to do with two-dimensional, or one-dimensional, or representations or pictures. It was a specific decision around a replica, and the fact it might have on tourist patterns.
Thank you. Councillor McFadden?
I think we just leave it alone, your worship. I mean, come on here. We have the Mile Zero, uh, enough, I said. We have, uh, the Mile Zero figure skating, uh, people and minor hockey, and I, I think they both use the Mile Zero on their letterhead, and a lot of folks do. So what? Let's get on to the sewer and water here.
Thank you. Councillor Parzl?
I will, uh, remember those comments, councillor McFadden, and in about a year's time, I will, again, like I said, over another topic. I was right. Just wait.
Thank you. So we've got, we're, uh-
Rolling along.
Rolling along. So we are ready for the, uh, that's the end of Mayor's Business? Any other questions?
Did we vote on that?
No.
Let's vote on that.
What?
Did we?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, right. Now we're talking some more about something else.
Diary, item ten. Uh, nothing new on the diary, but you have placed an item there that will be-
We need to answer the motion.
So, the, uh, motion for, uh, our transportation?
Yes.
Councillor Parzl?
I move that we, at, at future date, sometime in 2015, invite representatives of Ministry of Transportation, and whoever else staffed it, is necessary, give us an update about the- No. Update on the Twin Inn leaking of the Twin Inn's road from Pousne to Dawson Creek with the, um, what I'm calling the, uh, undesignedated Dangerous Goods route, and other ancillary matters about traffic flow around the city.
Thank you. Secretary councillor Schuman? So this is putting the item on the diary?
Right.
Yeah. Councillor Schuman?
Yeah. I just remember we were having a conversation in a past meeting around things with the Ministry of Transportation, and I did make the motion that we do invite them to come and meet with us. So, I guess it wasn't diarized or whatever, but I think it's important, we, we've met with them before, to talk about all sorts of concerns, so.
So now we got it on the diary?
On the diary, perfect.
Discussion, further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's Kerry, thank you. Consent calendar? Strategic priorities? Question and answer? No one signed up for that, tuition? Committee of the whole, item fourteen, fourteen-one, we have a report from the staff sergeant. Good morning, staff sergeant. No, sergeant.
Sergeant.
Well, do you want the designation staff? Are we allowed to give you that designation, or is that some other process? Trying us to make a call?
A whole lot of different processes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mayor Castle, happy new year to all. Um, first, I owe you all an apology. I was asked to come and bring this report in the form of a poem. And unfortunately, uh, I wasn't that creative this past month. Again, my apologies. I'm not sure I'll have the opportunity to do it next month, because I think our new staff sergeant will be here.
You could let him know, though, that we like poems.
Well, you know what? I think I'll let you guys bring that.
Poems or, or creative writing?
Yes. I'm kinda curious to see what his reaction will be, actually.
I can imagine.
It's time to leave. I guess to start off, as you guys know, Sergeant Scott West is gone. Um, Corporal Ed Rennick has been named as a replacement for him, so he's now Sergeant Ed Rennick. Uh, he's been at the detachment quite a long time. Like me, he's gone, uh, done policing elsewhere, and has returned to the community. And, uh, like me, he hopes to stay for quite a long time. Uh, let's see here. We still have two vacant corporal positions, one of which has finally been posted. Um, again, till we get boots on the ground, it may be six or seven months, while the process sorts itself out, but at least it's beginning. Uh, we are getting a new cadet. Um, he is scheduled to, uh, to finish training in February, but, uh, with all the stuff going on in Ottawa, he's gonna be spending eight weeks there first, before he comes back to Dawson Creek. Uh, so we may get him in April, and then, uh, hopefully by the end of summer, we'll have, uh, another member for us. And, the new staff sergeant, Marcel, he is due to be here mid-February. I guess his replacement is supposed to be starting next week in Fort St. John. He's gonna be traveling back and forth while he sells his house, but, uh, they're gonna have to, they're gonna wanna have a, a week overlap, so Marcel can kinda fill him in what's going on. And then Marcel hopes to come down here after that. Um, he may or may not take a little time off, I don't know, that's up to him, uh, to kinda get his mind in order, but, uh, that's the plan. So hopefully by mid-February, you'll have Marcel here. Um, as far as calls for service, uh, they've gone up a little bit over this time last year. Um, seven, seven hundred forty-four calls in December as opposed to six hundred and thirty-eight from the year prior. Um, our year-end values also went up. Uh, they went up to, uh, over nine thousand files, over eighty-three hundred files last year. And, uh, well, people still aren't getting the message. Overall, in the year, we had two hundred and forty-three impaired driving, uh, offenses happening in, in Dawson Creek. That's both, uh, under the provincial Motor Vehicle Act and the Criminal Code. So, I don't know what's going on, but people still think they can drive and get behind the, the wheel of a car, or drink and get behind the wheel of a car. Um, we've got some good news. Our local GIS unit, uh, um, executed two warrants just outside the city limits, just a matter of the wrong side of the road. And, uh, but they ended a whole bunch of stolen vehicles, firearms, property, machinery, you name it, from as far away as, uh, um, south of Red Deer to, uh, Pembroke or Pemberton, uh, somewhere down south of B.C., up towards Pink Mountain. Uh, these guys are organized. They're, they're, they get shopping lists, and they go and, and steal stuff, and then they bring it to central locations. Well, our guys did some really good work and shut down one of those locations, and this, uh, we, we got a bunch of property returned to their owners, and a bunch of charges laid. And, uh, kudos on them on that. It was, that was a big job, a lot of work on their behalf. And, uh, I just wanna let you guys know of that. Um, I guess to keep it short, uh, we did see an increase in residential break and enters, uh, in the area over Christmas. the area over Christmas. And I guess the only thing I can ask the public can do is just make sure that your buildings, your residents, your sheds, your garages are secure. Don't make it easy for these guys. And for, if, you know, keep a, be vigilant in your neighborhood. You know, keep an eye on your neighbor and on yourselves. If you see something suspicious, call us. And let us try to figure it out. And chances are, we'll, hopefully we'll find these guys. So, unless you guys have any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Schuman?
So, I have included the December stats report for your review. Did I miss that attachment? Is it somewhere that I'm not seeing it?
Well, I thought I attached it, but I may not have.
It looks like we may have missed it.
Okay.
We'll get it out to council by email.
All right. Also, so we're talking about the drunk drivers.
Yes.
I have a question. So, I go out, I drink too much, I just live over there. I decided to walk home a couple of blocks. Can I get pulled over for drunk walking and put in the drunk tank overnight for that specific reason?
Well, provided you're not walking into traffic and creating a danger for yourself or somebody else, you should be fine. However, we have picked up people and provided them drives home or to someplace that there's somebody to look after them. If they're in such a state that they can't look after themselves and there is no place to take them, we will house them until they can't look after themselves or we can find a better spot for them. But normally, if you've gone out and you've had too much to drink and you're aware that you've had that, chances are you're pretty safe from walking home.
All right. Thanks.
President Councillor McFadden?
Morning, Sarge. Just a question. The resident, increase in residential, is there any pattern that you're aware of, like daytime, nighttime, when they're happening, when people are at work?
No. Some have happened during, there has been an increase, and it's like from two to seven. So it's not like it's a cluster. It's a huge thing. But there is a noticeable increase. And as far as the files that I've reviewed, some have happened during the day, some have happened in the evening. There is no pattern.
Thank you.
It's just more of an opportunity thing from what I've seen.
And if you see Councillor Schuman out and about, give me a call. I'd be happy to give her a lift home.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Further questions? So I have two comments I guess I'd like to make. The first one is, I just want to give a compliment, because it seems to me, I've seen an increase in what appears to me as municipal traffic. The, see the member or members working significantly, Alaska Avenue, 8th Street, north on 8th Street, down on 17th Street, and it's been noticeably more visible to me in terms of having seen the members out working. And so I really want to extend appreciation, because we do have municipal traffic issues. And certainly, when I see that kind of activity, it obviously was noticeable to me in terms of how often I've seen them out there. So I just want to extend that piece on there. I've been talking to Councillor, to Councillor Richard, Sergeant Richard, over the last three or four months, as it relates to what I think is a significant social issue in crime and its related people that are stealing dogs. And he's been very helpful, working both with us, me personally in the SPCA. But the number of dogs that are being stolen within our community and our rural neighbors has been evident. And it seems to go in waves and spurts. And so it's been really, really, in my view, tragic to see how many people are losing their pets. And these pets are being stolen. They're no, so I just want to extend my appreciation to you guys in terms of taking it seriously and raise the awareness to our community and to our rural residents. People are devastated when you hear what is going on with their pets and why they're being stolen and all that stuff. So I just want to extend my appreciation on that basis, because when I've talked to the RCMP about it, they are taking it seriously, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. And I've just, and I've been in discussions with Superintendent Booth in Prince George, because I was involved in the interview process for Marcel, and been working with the superintendent and the transition for Staff Sergeant Marcel Gabot.
Yes.
Who's going to be here. And I spoke to Superintendent Booth about a week ago, I think, in regards to it, and we talked about the transition. So, just validating the information today, and we're looking forward to getting him in place. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you stepping in as well while we've had this transition period with Scotty going in.
It's all good.
Thank you. 14-2, we have a report from the Fire Chief. Morning, Chief.
Good morning. Everybody enjoying the spring-like weather, hopefully? I know we are, because last week it's been relatively slow at the station, so that's a good thing. But you have the report in front of you. It covers both November and December of last year. The numbers were up fairly significantly from overall last year. It's the second highest call volume that we've had since I've been here in Dawson Creek. So it's up there. Not quite sure what contributes to that. There's, there's times when, you know, this year we'll get more motor vehicle accidents than false alarms. The next year we'll get more false alarms and motor vehicles. So it's, it's kind of a hit-miss thing. So it's really none, not one thing that we can identify that caused the increase of numbers overall. So, we have that. One thing I want to mention is that in November, the firefighters had their, had a T-shirts, they had the orange T-shirts that they were wearing. They're raising money for the cancer ward here in the hospital in Dawson Creek. And they raised $4,000 for that, so, for that one evening. So that was, that was really good. Thanks to Boston Pizza for assisting us. Firefighter Gary Kerbrat led the charge on that one, so thanks to him for that. And it was successful enough, and they want to do it again next year. So, come on out and buy some beer bugs. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Councillor Parslow?
Yes, under your list of meetings, Shawty, again, you may be somewhat fettered in what you can share about this, but the Critical Incident Stress Management Team meeting, can you tell me a bit more about what was the focus of that?
One of the things that we identified earlier this year, or last year, I should say, is that we, we take very good care of our firefighters' physical strength. We take care of their, their physical strength, and we protect them with all kinds of latest technology and turnout gear and rating apparatus and trucks and whatnot. But one of the areas where we lacked is their mental needs. So one of the things that we've decided to do, and again, we started that process early last year, was to develop a Critical Incident Stress Management Team. So we've, we've done that by, we've had two different training sessions for firefighters to learn how to identify Critical Incident Stress Issues for firefighters. And from that, we, I think we had 12 firefighters partook in the training. So with that, they developed a team of five firefighters that now oversee the management of that program. So in other words, if we have a firefighter that deems it necessary that he needs to talk about a certain incident because it bothers him or her, then they phone our team leader, which is Lynette Fritshaw, and she will set up a meeting with, the firefighters are trained in that Critical Stress, Critical Incident Stress Management. And so they'll sit down and they call what they call a diffusing. If a diffusing isn't adequate enough, then it gets to the point where maybe there's some other issues, some other counseling, trauma counselors that are higher trained in the mental health profession. And so that's what that meeting was, is trying to identify who in the community has that upper-level training in the health profession. And so we're identifying that, those issues right now. So, it's a long process.
That's important, Mayor.
Thank you. Further questions? So along that lines, to me, the big issue that would, I would think that the one that would be, in terms of the numbers of incidents where it would be stressful, would be our emergency response to motor vehicle accident, where we have either serious catastrophic injuries or fatalities. And what's, so we make the decision to provide that service to our region on behalf of the community through our detachment. But maybe it's more through to Jim. Is that a legal responsibility that we have to provide that, or is that a service we've chosen to provide?
Through your worship, it's not mandated. It's a service that you're discretionaryally providing. And as you know from previous reports, you're providing it at a significant loss. So the taxpayers are picking up a fairly significant charge for that. When you have looked at it, and it has been probably eight or 10 years since that was reviewed, but it's been four or five times since I've been here it's been reviewed, consistently, council comes down to realizing that we have the only trained men and equipment that could respond in the, basically the RCMP detachment area. And the alternative would be people dying in vehicles because there was no response. And you just haven't been willing to, to put financial considerations above those people trapped in those cars.
Yeah, the social, moral conscience of a community to provide that service is the, I would assume, how you get into it. You get into it first by people volunteering equipment. And so all of a sudden, you got an emergency response vehicle, and you start to provide it, and it evolved into a service that you start to provide. And, but the province and the rural district and the rural areas, for us, I think about it from two perspectives. Not just the operational costs that we provide in terms of manpower, because when these guys go out and we're bringing guys back in to backfill. But it's this stress component as well that I think about more so than these guys, these young firefighters that are out there getting exposed to really traumatic, stressful events in their life. And are we making sure then, one, now we got to provide the support to them. But the impact to us is our, for our firefighters, for our staff that we hire them for, is the other piece to me in terms of what I think about. Anyway, just a comment.
Just, just to add to that, too, is, is it's, it's becoming more and more evident throughout the fire service that this type of stuff needs to be set up, Instant Stress Management Teams. Fort St. John is going through the same thing right now. They're setting up their team. And so we've kind of partnered with Fort St. John, so that if an incident happens in Dawson Creek where it affects most, if not all, of our firefighters, then they will send a team to assist us, and in turn, we would do the same for them. So it's a partnership between us and them as well.
It hit me when we were, I was at the regional district, and we had a presentation by search and rescue. And search and rescue, both the south piece and north piece have the volunteer search and rescue teams that develop that. Province is backing out of providing training for them. Province is saying, we're not going to provide that free training that we used to for your search and rescue volunteers. And so now, there's no funding source, and these guys volunteering their time. So they're looking now to the regional district, saying, you guys will help provide us with some of that training cost that we need to have now in order to maintain our status as search and rescue volunteers. And so I guess it's just another component, right, in terms of for us, that we're looking upon as the funding source for some of these services that we provide outside our municipal boundaries. And it's just, not, not anything other than that, just a comment. Any other questions for Chief? Thanks very much, Chief. Just something to think about. Item 14-3, we have a report from the Director of Corporate Administration.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Since we are not responsible for the financial disclosure statements from the candidates.
Anyone?
Yeah. Yeah. They're submitted directly to Elections B.C. I just wanted to remind all candidates that the deadline is February 13th, if you have not yet done that. And the next item is the smoking bylaw. Corporate Administration is working at educating all businesses in regards to the new regulations. We've sent out letters to over 1,200 businesses in town, and we will be sending letters to government agencies and leaseholders as well, just to inform them of the increased regulations. And also want to note that bylaw complaints are just going to be dealt with during regular business hours. And I don't know if there's any questions in regards to the smoking bylaw. But other than that, just any questions?
Councillor Parslow?
Sorry.
When will we be seeing the, I don't know, I wouldn't call it the chicken bylaw, but it may have another name among staff.
The animal control bylaw?
I'm looking at Jim with his aim. I have another name. That is to come to staff, to council, hasn't it?
It still needs to come to council. Yeah, we're just focusing on getting the education out first with the smoking bylaw.
And one last question. You know, looking at the report, you've got a section here about 2015.
Correct.
And waiting the outcomes of strategic planning. Some of these things, it just seems to me that it might be useful for that strat planning session if, all those things that we've either made decisions about for 2015, or things that you think have been decisions and probably hard decisions, that we have a list of. You've got quite a little list here in your, in your report. I don't know how, some of those things impact strategic planning, but it just struck me when I read this, that we have some decisions already made, such as Plan B of the fiscal gap, you know? So we need to have those up front in center before we start adding to the workload.
Jim? Through your worship, the concept on this year's strategic planning is you're going to start by reviewing your vision, basically. Council's, hopefully, will come to some consensus about what you want the community to be in five years, or 10 years, or 20 years. Then there's going to be more specific sessions about shorter-term objectives that would help you to get to that spot. Once you have set your strategic agenda, staff has to first service that. And so the budget will be aligned with that, departmental plans will be aligned with that. If there is time left over, things like this will be addressed. If there is no time left over, things like this won't be addressed.
Further questions for Brenda? Brenda, I forgot. There was one item, and I don't know if it's in here or not, but there was some guys that are going to the national championships, and I forgot to raise it. I know you're familiar with that, and I wonder if you'd just give us, council, a quick update on that. Just because there, it's a, local residents are, and I know you're familiar with that.
Yes, because of my husband, of course, is the coach. Thank you for bringing it up. He's going to be heading off to Newfoundland for the National Curling Junior Championship with his team. There is one local boy left on that team, Tristan Stanky, and they're competing with all the other provinces. Hopefully, we'll see them on T V on T S N in the final. We'll see. That's, I think.
Yeah, I just, actually, I just thought of it.
Two Saturdays from now.
So it's really, really great to see we got two local representatives curling and participating in a national championship. I forgot to mention it on Mayor's Business. So, thank you. Councillor Jabakoff?
Just a question regarding the staff at the RCMP. There was a comment that I got off the street, so I don't know the details, but I, I thought maybe Brenda might know. The difference between having city staff as jail guards versus commissioners, which I understand are funded by the federal government. Are you, do you have any knowledge of that, or?
Jim? Yes. The last time you were approached by the commissioners was, I don't believe in the term of anyone, not in the last term, but the term before that, the commissioners had approached you. They are generally able to offer a discounted rate, because some portion of their compensation is a federal program for the support of veterans, basically. Now, whether that funding still exists, I don't know. We haven't heard from the commissioners for some time. What I can tell you, though, is it's bargaining unit work. So, at the moment, it belongs to QP. And to have it be otherwise would be a negotiation with QP. I wouldn't predict success on that, but it is a possible, it's something you could look at, but it would be in conjunction with collective bargaining.
My understanding is that Fort St. John has commissioners. Now, I don't know that for a fact, but again, I just heard it on the street, so.
That's possible. I'm not certain. Canadian Union of Public Employees doesn't have the Fort St. John bargaining unit. It's B.C. government. It's B C Government Employment, Employees Union that have the Fort St. John bargaining unit.
Thank you.
Jim? Brenda from Modesty neglected to also inform you that there are two local boys competing this weekend in Wainwright in the Alberta Curling Play Downs to go to the Briar. Trace, Tristan Stanky's older brother, Jordan, and Brenda's son, Jiggy.
Jiggy?
Jason.
Oh.
Are on two separate teams, but they're both there. And possibly going to the Briar, one or the other, but not both of them.
Yeah, I just, like I said, I forgot to do it under mayor's business and just triggered me when Brenda was speaking that we ever got national participation from that event. So I just thought it was great, a bit of news, so thank you. Counselor Schuman, you had a question?
Yeah, so over the year, we direct things to strategic planning, like, and it's just looking at the K-Pact expressions of interest. Is there going to, is there a list of things compiled that are?
There are four items that you, over the last year, referred to the following year's strategic planning, and they'll be built into the session. The consultants have those items.
Okay.
And, you know, you do the visioning piece first because some, some or all of them may be irrelevant thereafter.
Okay, thanks. I just, I'm myself having a hard time remembering all the different things that we've sent off to strategic planning and.
Thank you, Brenda. Item 14-4, we have a report from the Chief Financial Officer. Good morning.
Good morning, your worship. Yeah, so it always amazes me with city business, one minute you're talking about community and kids going to a national championship, and the next minute you're talking about guards. And then you're talking about something else, and that's what city services is all about. It encompasses a lot of services. And this report basically outlines everything that was done in a year that covers the scope of all those services. So I don't have too much to say, other than lots of the work is carried over into 2015, such as the fiscal gap, the operating costs of the Calvi-Crocker Art Center. And then we have the sewer trunk line that's going to be carried forward as well. And then, as council talked about before, the water projects and the capital budget, so. And then basically we have a, a number of items from 2013 that were carried over, so we'll have to go through those as part of the strategic planning process as well. And then basically, basically we summarize to do with the new budgets, budget cycle. And come February 2nd, council will be talking about the information in that plan. And at the same time, we're going through the audit work. Basically that's scheduled for the end of February, so it's just bang, 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 we're back into business as usual for 2015, so. Anyway, that's about it. Does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Rogers?
Yes, through your worship, the sewer trunk line. I've noticed that the borrowing cost on that was over $6 million. The project has about a million and a half remaining in the budget. With that million and a half that's remaining, what is the intent to be done with that? Are we going to, are we going to pay down our loan that we had borrowed the money for? Or am I reading it wrong?
Yeah, through your worship, so basically there's a couple of things. When you have a project budget, it just sets the parameters of how much you can spend. So if you don't spend up to that budget, you don't need the funding. So basically what, pardon me, what that is saying is that if we don't spend that much, we won't borrow that much. So for 2015, if we only spend another $500,000, then we'll only have to borrow up to the max. And then when we, pardon me, when we finish the project, we'll report out to council, this is what the total project cost was, this was the borrowing, and then the unused borrowing just falls off the table.
Okay. Further questions? Counselor Jevakov?
I guess some history. Last year, or the year before, the province announced that they were going to do an audit of the city. Was that audit done, or is there any information on that?
Jim? So what Counselor Jevakov is talking about is the Auditor General for local government, which is not exactly the province, it's a standalone body. That work is in process, but Counselor Jevakov will not be aware, because he wasn't sitting here, that you all signed off on confidentiality. We can't talk about the, that audit process until the report is delivered. So I can't even give you timelines, because we took a, we agreed to confidentiality.
We can say that it's still in progress, though.
It's still in progress. The report is not up.
Further questions? So I'm, I'm going to raise my question now that I have, and it came out of the LGLA, and there was a financial presentation we had on, and one of the things that was made in this presentation was the tax due date is July 2nd, but it's not usually cast in stone, because it could be July 3rd or July 4th, but it's usually that first few days in July. And so it got me thinking about, we do a borrowing anticipation bylaw that gives us the, basically our line of credit till we get the dough in in July, when we get the 13 or 14 or 15 million dollars that hits us, when the tax money is, the revenue starts rolling into the city. And that's when it hits us, is that July 2nd, 3rd, or 4th? Because I would assume 90% of the dough hits us from the banks or people paying their taxes at that due date. But it got me thinking about in terms of, we don't need all the money on July 2nd. We need it throughout the course of the year as we're operating the community. And so most residents, the majority of that tax dollars comes from their banks, who they finance it through their mortgage, and the bank pays the taxes for them. And a resident or a mortgage owner gives them their 50 bucks or 100 or 200 bucks a month, and then the bank pays them the money. Have we ever looked at or considered providing a monthly payment option to our homeowners, to our residents themselves? Because I got thinking about it and saying, well, if the banks don't give them any interest, the bank don't give you any interest on that mortgage money. But if we said, okay, we'll, we'll administer a monthly payment process and charge 2% or 3% or 4%, we could, in essence, then gain an additional three or four points on, perhaps 50% of the residents may take advantage of that. But then on the other side of it, what's the downside, or what's the impact of not getting all that dough all at once in terms of having the interest and all those things? So that was just my question.
Yeah, through your worship, yes, we already have that in place. Any resident has the option of a monthly payment plan, and we basically encourage, every time we go through the tax cycle, we encourage people to sign up and get a monthly payment. And the interest rate is prescribed by the province, and right now it's about 1.5%. So it's minimal, but it's still good for the resident's cash flow if they do it on a monthly basis. And then they're not subject to penalties and interest and, and all that, so.
What's the uptake? Poor.
Pardon me? Poor? It's getting better. It's getting better.
4% of the population?
No, he said poor.
Poor!
Yeah, it's, it didn't, we had great hopes for it when it started, and one of the things we didn't fully appreciate is that virtually no standard commercial mortgage allows you to do that. Most standard commercial mortgages require you to give it to the bank, and they give it to us. And that is exactly so they have that money and we don't. So inroads have been made, and partly, you know, partly it's a transitional period. We're probably just early on the curve of this, but the uptake wasn't where we anticipated it to be. Now, maybe it's picking up.
Yeah, every year it gets better, and we also have that option for the utilities payments accounts as well. And basically all we're trying to do is upgrade our technologies so that customer payments can be easier and people can access it quicker, that kind of thing. So it's ongoing.
Is there an incentive for us, is there, so is there a pro or a con for us to get the money on a monthly basis so that we get it sooner rather than all in one lump? Or are there cons to us?
Well, the benefits to the city, of course, is cash flow management, right? So if you get money steadily over each month, that's better for us. But we, we track the cash management now, month to month, and basically we just make sure that we're not in an overdraft, so we don't have to use that credit line, because anytime you use a credit line, you're paying interest. So we try to avoid that, and between the cash balances in our bank and in our reserves, we can cover it off internally. So that's what we, we do, but yeah.
Is there an opportunity for us to look at that from, if we said, okay, if we increase the uptake by 10 or 15 or 20%, it changes the overall net position of the city by one point? So, and so I guess I'm thinking of, is if there is a benefit to us to consider trying to increase that uptake, can we offer an incentive to then, to the homeowners to participate in it if there's a financial benefit to our community?
Yeah, well, I think what, what we do is we just provide education and awareness to the customer. We don't incentivize, because then we have to manage it, basically, but, you know, we encourage people, this is the benefit to you, and, and go from there. And I really do think it's a use of technology that is going to make the value to the city increase over time. Right now, what we're investigating, and we're not sure if we can roll it out this year, but is for residents to have the ability to pay through Visa. There's now service providers that charge the cost back to the resident. So some people love to use their Visa card, and then basically you can get payment out front. But we've basically tried to say, stay away from, if you pay 30 days in advance, you get a 15% discount, because that, that costs, and then you have to manage. And basically, you know, this is bill payment, right? If you can get on a, on a program that is basically easy to manage for the resident, that's what we're, we're trying to promote.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Rogers? Your current status is, is you still have a, you still have a vacancy?
We actually have three.
You have three. How are you making out with that?
We're doing okay. We're doing okay, yeah. We, the postings have gone up this week, and basically, you know, we have a great team. Everybody watches everybody else's back, and we're just trying to prioritize over the first three months. We've gone through this cycle before. We have good systems in place, and yeah, we're just doing what we have to do.
Thank you. Further questions? Thank you, appreciate it. Item 14.5, we have a report from the Director of Development Services. Good morning.
Such an easier term.
Short it up for you.
Good morning. Yeah, and the report's a little shorter, too. It's even better. Couple things to touch on, as you'll see in the report, I've tried to get the different sections of my department to give a little bit of what's been going on. Building Department, we see some new regulations coming in the, in the new year here with the building code, some new standards typically aimed around efficiencies and improvements in windows, insulation. Bylaw, bylaw has been very busy, especially recently with, with the snow and the melts and the freeze and things like that. We've, we've received a, a number of calls, you know, regarding sidewalks and things like that, so they're, they're kept hopping. And we are going through the training of our new officer, Sean Hendrickson, who's been with us for a few months now. But it's taken a bit of time for us to get some of the training lined up, and we'll be doing that here early in the new year. Engineering, you'll see there that, one thing I wanted to note was the GPS fleet tracking. So right now what we have is we have all the equipment installed, in the particular pieces of equipment that we had targeted, and we expect by the end of the month, we'll have something up and running that will be viewable by, by the public. Right now we have it where it's, it's operable, but it's just something that we can test internally, so that's, that's where we're at with that. And engineering is, we're currently down one position and we're recruiting for that, and they're working on, or he is working on capital budget items for, for 2015, so starting with number of designs and monitoring with that. Some of the stats that we, we have for 2014, as you'll see, our building permit totals just slightly above 2013, so 2014 topped out at just shy of $57 million. So a very strong year, which is just slightly above the 2013 value of 55. Total new dwelling units, 289. Interesting, interesting to me, aspect to that is just over 30% of those are secondary suites. So 2014 was a pretty strong year for secondary suites. Only other couple of things I wanted to touch on was the sewer development cost charges. I was hoping by now that we'd be starting some public consultation on that. We just simply haven't managed to get to that yet, so we'll be moving on that hopefully here soon in the new year. And the other thing is, as we've noted, that the department has been split between Sean and I, so that I'm focusing more on the planning building side, so dealing with subdivisions, Building Inspection Department, Capital Works, Bylaw. And Sean will be taking over the, the maintenance aspects of, of everything within the city as far as roads, water, sewer, grounds, so, yeah. So with that, I'll turn it over if there's any questions.
Thank you. Kevin? Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so when I was reviewing the agenda in the mayor's absence with, with staff, staff had some interesting numbers with regards to development numbers. And through the, you, the mayor, to Jim, could you talk a little bit about that, the 2002 numbers to the 2014 numbers that I found rather impressive?
So in 2002, your total building permits were 8 million, and your dwelling, new dwelling units constructed were 15. You are now at 57 million in new construction and just short of 300 dwelling units plod on in the year. And if you think it's a coincidence that fracking started in 2003, and these numbers have got to where they're at, you're wrong. They are tied together. So what that means going forward is, you know, if there's low oil prices and LNG plants don't go, and that activity declines, you're going to see a decline in your activity. But on the other hand, if LNG goes and a lot more activity happens, you need to expect that these numbers might be a small baseline compared to what happens, just as 2002's numbers were a very small baseline compared to what happened.
Thank you. Further questions? Kevin, one for me, is the GPS I see is starting to install in the equipment and we're starting to do some training. Can you give us a quick update on that?
Yeah, just that, like I said, they are installed, it's in the equipment. We can, we can internally test and do that, and hopefully by month's end, that'll be up and running. And what it'll show is where the equipment is within the municipality. And internally, we'll be able to do things as far as see when certain operations are happening, whether blades are, you know, up, down, sanders are on and off. Those are the types of things internally that we'll be able to use for efficiencies and, and things within the department. So I think there's some, some great aspects, also the working alone, you know, and the safety of the employees. So there's a number of aspects there.
In risk management terms, it's not, it's great for the safety of the employee, it's great for subsequent court actions, for instance. We'll actually be able to show a real-time track of when the grader was on that street, whether its blade was down, that sort of stuff. But as always, things are not quite as simple as the salespeople told you they were, and IT is working through this, but it wasn't as seamless to bring it online on our website as we thought it was going to be.
Yeah, I think to me, the benefits for us in terms of employee safety, you know, and the whole working alone component, but to me, the, be able to push that information out live, real-time to residents, to be able to see where our equipment's working and what it's there in their neighborhood, I just think is a huge benefit.
what it's there in their neighborhood, I just think is a huge benefit to us. And I wish there were some way we could do it to our hired equipment, but the lack of consistency in terms of who you're hiring and all that stuff is not going to make that a feasibility. But I really liked the aspect, Kevin, of that. See, we had one, only one applicant for duplex with a suite in our, so did that completely drop off? We didn't have anything through that other than that seven-day period?
Yeah, that was exactly right. That was the only one and they were within that seven-day period.
Good. Thanks, Kevin. Any further questions? Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Report 14-6, a report from the Director of Infrastructure. Morning.
Good morning. This is a result of me believing Kevin.
He kicked you in the knee.
I just had a couple of highlights here this morning that I'd like to go over. The first good news story that I'd like to tell is when we look at our yearly totals for 2014, we produced or put through the plant approximately 2.6 million cubic meters of water, very similar to 2013, which was 2.2. And unfortunately, in 2014, we experienced a leak that equated to about 200,000 cubic meters of water. So those numbers are fairly similar. In saying that, if we're to look at all of our industrial use, the city's water sales, our three private haulers, they equate to right around 205,000 cubic meters. I'm comparing that to our reclaim, which this year, between Shell and our reclaimed water, or truck fill station, we sold just about 240,000 cubic meters. So the good news there is, is we utilized more reclaim for oil and gas than potable water.
I noticed that on that last thing you put there.
Secondly, I just wanted to go over, you were just talking about GPS possibly, you know, for our equipment, but you know, it would be nice if it was on the hired equipment. I just wanted to go over our three major snowfalls since the start of November and what that extra equipment equated to. For our first snowfall in November, additional equipment to provide the service we provided was approximately $26,000. For our second snowfall at the end of November, it was approximately $50,000. And for this last snowfall that we just did, it was approximately $40,000. Those are higher graders and hired loaders, giving us the ability to get over the entire town in approximately two to four days depending. In looking at the overall costs, when we take those snowfalls and we add in our removal components, which is downtown lanes, sidewalks, parking lots, and we include that hired equipment component with the graders and loaders, our first entire snowfall for contracted equipment, the first part of November, cost us $46,000. The second one in November cost us $117,000. And the last one that we just went through cost us $96,000. The final thing that I just wanted to touch on briefly, in effort to continually better our infrastructure and manage it properly, we have recently reduced our hours of operation at the Sandy Dump from 7:30 to 4:30. So water treatment plant staff will be able to attend and monitor that station if required. Secondly, we have currently ordered hydrocarbon detection equipment for that station as well as one of our lift stations in town. We should have that equipment by the end of the month and hope to have it installed and up and running for early February. Any questions?
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Just one question, Sean. Number four, Kiskatna Watershed Stewardship Program. I note at the very end of the report there, it said, "Recommendation to Director of Infrastructure for the City of Dawson Creek to request for the Kiskatna Watershed to be included in a provincial community watershed study." Can you elaborate on that at all?
Sure. So designated community watersheds throughout the province are going to be put through a process where they're looked at and the pressure's on those. Unfortunately, at this time, we haven't been designated, as we all know. We are still going to make application to try and become involved in that even though we haven't been designated.
And I'll just follow up on that. I did make a call to the Minister's office and got to, and it was just at Christmas time through the holidays, and the executive assistant or the ministerial assistant sent me a note and said that she was off, but she would be calling me. And I haven't heard back from her. I was away last week, but I will be following up because I want to know why. We made the request to the Minister at UBCM in terms of having that designation and we want to know why we weren't.
Counselor Schuman?
So we're headed off tomorrow to Prince George to the Natural Resource Forum, the premier's natural resource forum. Is there anything that could be said to certain people there or should we, I mean, they're all there. He's there for sure.
Yeah. When we met with the Minister Thompson, Forest Lines Natural Resources at the UBCM in regards to it, and we got the commitment from the Executive Director for this area, Dale Morgan, would be following it up right after Christmas with us in regards to our request specifically for that designation. So certainly, I'm going to follow it up with the ministerial assistant in terms of Minister Thompson about this call for proposals. And certainly, if you see him and you bump into the minister there, then.
Jim?
Yes, we've been advised by the government that they're, they won't be taking ad hoc meetings there. There are some that have been set up in advance, but they're budgeting the time of the provincial government ministers pretty closely. They're mostly coming in and out just for the day.
Counselor Javecco?
I was just wondering about the water leak, 200,000 meters leaked?
Yeah.
Where was that?
Huge leak. It was up on 97th Avenue and 13th Street. And what had happened is there was a settlement underground that we were unaware of. It cracked the water line. And when the water line pushed down when it cracked, it cracked the sewer line, which was directly below it. And all the water went directly into the sewer line. And we had no way to-
Which is why we couldn't catch it.
We had no way to detect it.
Oh.
Because water in the system, water out of the system, right? We had no way to find it until we randomly lifted that lid. We would have found it in the next year's maintenance program because that's where it was. But we lifted that lid and it was, we could see it was roaring into the sewer.
Counselor Rogers?
Regarding the lift station and detectors that are going in those, why are we doing that?
To ensure the safety of our system. We have noticed over the last little bit that we have had some substances enter our system that are-
Hydrocarbons.
Pardon me?
Hydrocarbons.
Hydrocarbons, yeah. Hydrocarbons that have entered our system that could be detrimental to our system. So to ensure the safety of the system, we're going to put monitoring equipment on it.
Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Rogers?
Are you, are you short on staff as well?
We have a couple of vacancies, yes, we do. We have one at the water treatment plant. And actually, we are, have currently posted for a few seasonals at the Public Works Department.
Thank you.
I'm all done.
Sorry, go ahead.
Subcontracted equipment for snow removal was at about $259,000 for subcontractors during those last three snow removals. I wonder if it would not be viable for the city to either lease a grader and train one of our employees that we have now?
Our subs were 126? It was firstly, it was about 120,000 over the three events for the contracted. The figure you're using includes our equipment.
Okay.
And actually, it includes hired trucks for some downtown snow removal. So I guess that is hired equipment, but it's, you know, it's 25 trucks, say, that come for just that night. So it wouldn't be feasible for us to buy 25 trucks.
It's fucking greater.
The, so, couple things. The incidence of qualifying snowfalls is definitely getting more frequent. We have had three incidences that Sean is talking to you about in this snow year where more than 18 centimeters fell in a single dump. That's our record. And the winter's not over yet. That's more than we've had in any winter up to now. But we've had two each of the previous and it's just, it appears to be, that's where the trend is going. When we bring in equipment, we're, we're at risk because we aren't bringing what is available. So we have been fortunate to have maximum six, I think, graders that were available to us. Two years ago, we had one grader that was available to us in a similar dump. So that's the market forces at play. Sean brought Counselor a report, I thought it might have been last year, but it might have been-
Last winter.
Last winter, talking to you exactly about where those breakpoints are. The consensus of council at the time was to continue with the hired graders rather than incur the cost of leasing or hiring another grader and employing another operator full-time. So we could bring you that same report again on where those costs break down. But it has been looked at very recently and council directed to continue outsourcing to get the maximum amount of equipment for the shortest period of time.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Item 14-8, we have a report from the Airport General Manager. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I did by, oh, right by you. Community Services. Community Services.
I'd skip it, Barry, you're almost.
Thank you.
I'm going to break out.
I was going to thank you because usually I am the last. The report prepared for council is only half of the department update. There will be, we decided instead of complete data and statistics being forward, that you'll see the complete review of the numbers for the arenas and the parks in the next Cal report. And wanted to probably focus most of my discussion and probably some of the answers or questions around the arena and some of the steps forward as we move into our study coming up next week and some of the information that we found this weekend at the arena. So within the departments, first and foremost, the strategical planning met and exceeded or met all of our strategic priorities last year. The most significant was the one driven and directed by council of the opening of the Calvin Crook Center. And that was completed in September of this year, as well as the unsuccessful bid for the O18s, the Phase Two, which will be a critical movement forward with our cemetery expansion and moving forward this year. The ICE usage review was, was pretty much in full swing until we had our challenges at the arena. But as well, we're collecting some great data through this process that we're into now. And a customer service review at the pool, and I think one of the statistics that we're probably very happy with this year is the leveling or the increased usage again back at the pool and staff working very hard to, to get those numbers where we believe will be true reflections as we move strategically forward and level out as we, as we go. There are a number of very unique programs within that Duncan has highlighted with our staff, a number of very creative ways that Duncan has worked with, Malina and her complete staff, as well as some internal review locally with a local consultant that has brought, I would say, some renewed vigor back to our pool and some very creative out-of-the-box thinking. And we're seeing results of that, not only in our staffing and our, what I would call our core business review, but a better thinking way of how we progress forward into the challenges of anything from energy cost to recruitment retention. But most of all, making it a great place for our people to be. So there's lots there if you want to ask some questions around that. Our Recreation Department does a great job in, in working with this, with the tools and the resources that they have. And I would probably maybe answer one question is that within our department, we do have some staff shortages and they continually be within the pool. But I think we're starting to address that quickly. And if we didn't have the arena challenge enclosure, we're still short over at the arena in regards to qualified staff as well. So a lot of statistics, some really neat comparables. Also have been doing some review of year-end financial reviews and looks like both in the pool and the arena, which are two of our most expensive venues to keep open and do, well within the revenues and exceeded revenues at the pool this year, expectations. And even with the challenge we had at the arena, stayed within our envelope within the department. So that's good news as well. Interesting statistics, and we're charting very closely the amount of people walking, especially with the additional opening extended hours at the Encana. We'll be tracking those hours because we felt we had a pretty good handle on the peaks and valleys of those hours that we're doing. So that will be very interesting. And one last thing that I think I want to highlight was the leisure access policy that was approved by council, that no one will be refused admission or registration of any of our public rec activities, has been extremely well-received within the city and is being used very well. We're looking forward very much at bringing forward our strategical plans forward through, through Jim as we challenge our staff with new and yet creative and very fiscal-minded projects as we move forward. Any questions regarding that? Or if I can maybe outline some of the information we received this weekend or where we've gone within the two weeks of council approving us to start to move forward?
Barry, I'll let Counselor Parrow have a question though.
Sure. Before you move on to that, I just am having problems understanding the graphs that you presented under the Aquatic Center.
Sure.
I'm looking at the graph that has Aquatic Center yearly attendance comparison.
Yes.
And then the one that I'm having problems reconciling with the first one I referenced is the yearly drop in attendance comparison.
Correct.
So how did you, how, where did those figures come from? Because if I look at the, you know, the 2008, 2009 figures across there, I don't get the figures that are in that other graph. So I'm just, I'm obviously not understanding the problem.
Dropping.
Yes, drop, but the drops don't-
It dropped. So the peak when we first opened, Counselor, so we're looking at the top graph, the aquatic yearly attendance comparisons. When we first opened, are you saying we had significant numbers of 112, 113, 111?
Well, let's say-
And then comparable back to then the yearly drop in? Is that what you're looking at? The red?
Oh, I'm reading it drop in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Drop?
Oh, no, not the drop in, yes.
Yeah.
The total.
I wanted to bury this one. First off, at the behest of the Chief Financial Officer, we went to a common format for committee of the whole reports because some department heads were a little more creative in structuring their reports than others. That would be buried. But we forgot to put in the no colored graphs. So the orange graph that you see is a combination of the blue, red, green, and purple graphs. And if we don't check this soon, you're going to have probably a polka dot graph in there as well.
Very, Barry. Keep going, Barry.
I'm colorblind, Barry.
I had no problem with Barry's graphs whatsoever.
Oh, is it?
Thank you, Jim. We always have stuck by the motto, "In God we trust, the rest, please bring data." And I thought our staff was doing that. So we're, no, we'll keep them.
Okay, it's supportive, Barry. I love, I love graphs and stuff and-
The rest of the department heads are listening.
In fairness, though, to the swimming pool, right? I mean, when you do these graphs, was it 2013 when you had that significant regrouting or whatever the tile?
Yeah, and that's probably why you saw that drop of the, into the 80s numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was a significant drop. But that, again, refresh my memory. Why is the swimming pool closed in September rather than, let's say, January for maintenance? You did tell me once, but I, I keep being asked this question by people, not great numbers of people, three or four people maybe. Why is it to be, is it closed, not open in September for annual maintenance rather than January, let's say, when it's- January, let's say, when it's...
If I think I recall, I think the answer I did give you...
What was your answer, last time I asked you?
What I believe with Tyron, someone will correct me very quickly, was that that has always been the traditional time? And when you challenged us last time, we said we were going to go back to our staff and look at whether that was the best time.
And so you haven't gone back to discuss that with them yet?
I'll remind Duncan right away.
Duncan's nodding his head there, right? Okay.
Thank you.
To you.
Okay, a little bit of, and probably the most important project we're working on today is the arena closures. From council's direction, we have, we will be bringing Brian Johnston back from Perk. Brian has laid a very comprehensive three-section study that we'll be putting in place. And as we speak today, Megan is in contact and working with all of our user groups. And I'll be asking through Jim's coordination, there is a presentation that will be done to council. There will be individual opportunities for council if they want to engage in providing insight or thoughts into recreation as we move forward. So we'll be in contact for that. And most of the user groups were given the heads up and will be given a framework of some of the questions that Brian will be pulling together. Brian, and I think as well, I can probably through Jim release this once the end of today, his steps in moving forward with the study proposal services. And in that needs assessment, there are nine steps that we'll be looking at. The first one that he will start next weekend is all of the stakeholder interviews. And from that, we'll also be collecting numerous amounts of data and statistics around our population, our demographics, a lot of the historical patterns of what we've seen within the city and how the city has grown over those years. We'll be looking very hard into the operating costs and revenues of our ice-based facilities. And as council would remember, we did a lot of work on our fees and charges and so we have some good foot base information for him. There will be a full conducted workshop with council. The draft and report for review will be brought forward. Finalizing those meetings with our client groups and our workshop with our stakeholders, there will be a complete review and information sharing with our stakeholders as that is completed, which will include that final report that Brian will bring forward to council. In regards to the facility plan, we've been working with TFM. TFM was up this weekend, both ends of the chillers, both chillers were open this weekend and we'll bring information forward in some photos. I think the pictures will probably tell the best story. We do believe that there is opportunity to Eddie current test one of the chillers and that will be aligned up in hopes of the opportunity to bring forward through that facility review, the what-if scenarios for the curling club for next year. The Eddie testing will be in current and also very important as we pull the header trench apart to provide information on the piping, the brine lines underneath the pad. And so that header trench will be cut out and removed here ASAP within the week. So the data collection, which Brian will need to both A, provide final reports to council on options on those facilities will be done, but more so probably very shortly we'll be able to give council some idea of where we sit currently with what we have left of the infrastructure to date. So those are lining up and that would line back up with the facilities plans to address all of those needs. With the finalization, we'll have recommendations from TFM this week on a couple of different companies to do the building envelopes. And that all aligns back up with the schedule of work that we're completing within the next two weeks. And when I'm away, Duncan will bring that report forward to council. So for lack of a better term, a Gantt chart from start to finish of where we hope to be able to complete information sharing with council and the public. We're making every effort to keep our user groups in contact with as we move forward. There are a lot of questions out in the community and as anyone could attest, there's a lot of passion. And we see that in our Facebook postings, we see that in our community coffee shops and most of all, I'm sure council is getting many comments. And as I spent a little time this weekend working with Mike at the arena and looking at some of that information and at our plant, you only have to step near the old timers tournament to feel that passion and the thoughts that they have about the importance of the memorial, recreation in the future, and most of all, what that means to them as a community. So we've got a lot of work cut out and I think we can have an opportunity to make some great decisions as we move forward. Any questions regarding that that I can help you with?
Thanks, Barry. Any questions? Councillor Schuman?
I was out of the room when you first started, but this doesn't have to do with those specifically. Over the weekend, I had a few questions around the dry use in the arena and how that will be determined, what that dry use is, and whether there will be like user group, a call to the community of user groups that want to use that dry surface, et cetera, et cetera. Have we put our mind to that at all yet? I know it's early.
No, it's not early at all. We've been trying to wrap our mind around, this is a difficult, in a couple of different ways, we will have a report coming forward within two weeks as council remembers we had some dry floor rates that were set through fees and charges. And some user groups are asking that council look at it, deem it differently. So we'll be bringing a couple of different options forward because we just can't, as you know, waive that fee or change that fee without council direction and haven't had time to put that together this week. The other challenge is the staffing model that would go with it. As we looked at cost savings and efficiencies and as we move forward, one of those was staffing models as well. So anytime we have people in our buildings that require staffing models, so we are now currently trying to look at what that options look like. And again, it could be blocking that into certain times of maybe a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday weekend package, as opposed to you can rent or do a dry floor rental on Tuesday morning at nine when we don't have staff in place. So there's a lot of work to that and we'll be bringing reports forward. Part of that discussion will also happen with Brian through the data collection for the needs assessments. So it's a bigger picture, but we are considering everything as we move forward.
Thanks, Barry. Jim? Just a point to make on that. So it's been now two weeks since council announced that they were going to be looking at dry floor uses in the memorial as a piloting to see what the market is like. There's a market there, we haven't defined it yet, but it's not just councillors that are getting the calls. The department is getting a lot of calls from people who value the idea of an indoor heated space in the winter to do their activities. So, you know, we, I believe we're gonna be pleasantly surprised about the market for that. Thanks. And on that point, I guess as we have engaged the gentleman to do the analysis for us on that work, is, I don't know if they're a group that we've targeted for him to also engage with, but I'm thinking that the Dawson Creek Athletic Association, Councillor Jevakov maybe can add to this, is that part of that conversation at the annual general meeting, I think they were talking about a future project that they really are looking or want to consider or are developing was a fieldhouse of some sort. And I'm wondering if this gentleman would be worthwhile to ensure we engage him with the Dawson Creek Athletic Association, just to have that conversation with them as well. And I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, Paul?
There was some discussion about a fieldhouse. I don't know if the arena is sufficient size, but it's certainly worth opening a conversation with the DCAA.
I'm, yeah, and I guess I'm thinking about just that concept. If they're thinking about that, we should engage them in what their thoughts are as a group promoting sport in the community to make sure that he engages with them as well.
Yeah, certainly if I had a contact for that, councillor, I would appreciate that.
Councillor Schuman?
Just further to that, Barry. So is it like the field-type activities that are being brought forward or is there thoughts being put to like court-type activities as well? I mean, the questions I was getting was around space for volleyball, basketball, that kind of thing.
As much data as we can collect from that, we are going to. The direction was to look at specific needs around the current ice user groups, but we'd be amiss if we did not include as many of the potential dry use or as councillor referred to, you know, the fieldhouse opportunity. It ranges, we've had several calls right across the board. Again, from minor hockey dry floor to indoor soccer group is looking at discussion, we'll bring them in for discussion. There's a gymnastics club locally that would like to pick a ball.
So is it, is it the groups that need to contact you or are you putting your feelers out for those people?
We put the list together as comprehensive as we have within the committee, but as some groups here, and I hope I'm not, the challenge will be is that if you totally opened it right, right up without getting first and foremost the focus of what the needs assessment is about, my fear would be is you could be looking at a very extensive group of people that are looking for any piece of recreational space. But we're gonna collect as much of that as we can. A lot of our programs that are offered in, across the board, we have so many contacts, so we may lump them into an information sharing opportunity. As Jim said, there's been requests of space for pickleball to indoor rugby to soccer to rollerblading. Those groups may be lumped together, but if we do miss them, there will be opportunity for people to share that.
I mean, my direction from council right now is that we are not hitting dry floor users against ice users. My direction from council is we're gonna evaluate the need for ice surfaces and make a decision about replacing ice surfaces based on whether that need is demonstrated or not. I didn't understand that we might not open an ice surface even though it was needed because we prefer to open a dry floor. I think that's a conversation that is a different conversation. So I wouldn't want to wrap them together because then you will have the ice users believing that rather than contribute to this study on their own need, they also need to somehow defend themselves against dry floor users and I wouldn't want to create that dynamic. Thank you. Any further questions? Paul, our Councillor Jevakov?
Just back to the first part of the report there about cemeteries, the expansion, is that the cemetery out Brookside or?
Correct.
And have you assessed how long we've got for cemetery use?
Duncan can answer that question, I think.
Sure. It's the city cemetery actually that we're looking at, not Brookside.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no. Oh, sorry, Brookside this way.
Yeah, its expansion into the road formerly known as Calder Way.
Oh, okay.
And we're looking at about fifteen hundred or more plots between cremation and internment. We've got the layout right now. As far as existing timeframes, I mean, you can never predict, but looking at the past, we are anticipating at least four or five years still in the city between city and Brookside. But we'd like to get that land developed this year. It's part of our strategic priority last year and we put some money in budget to get it developing. I mean, it'd be nice for it to be ready for use within the next couple of years.
Great. Thank you. Further questions? Thank you, Barry. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No. Fourteen eight, we have the report from our Airport General Manager. Good morning, Ian.
Morning.
Let me give a bit of an overview of the operations at the airport in 2014. Focus of the airport is to provide a safe and secure environment for people to travel and if anybody has tried to get on the airport, I'll attest that our security guard will tackle you and it wouldn't be very pleasant, safe. We're mandated by regulations, Transport Canada regulations to operate under the safety management system and we're well into that. Winter operations last year were pretty tough on us with the freeze and thaw and the freeze and thaw that we had that raised some concerns with our electrical. Weather conditions were bad. We've had, we had a few missed approaches because of the weather and our EWS went down, which didn't, EWS is the automated weather observation system. And it's not maintained by us, it's maintained by NavCanada. It went down and it raised a lot of problems for CMA landing at the airport for about five days. We were able to get an alternate altimeter from Fort St. John that helped us out for aircraft landing. And our precision approach system was giving us some problems as well, so this last summer we had it, a consultant come in and certify it okay. Spring and summer were very quiet, all the electrical issues were addressed with the capital project. The EWS was upgraded so that we wouldn't have that problem anymore that we had the year before, or last year. Fall and winter observation are going very well or went very well. We lost one of our, one of our operators, he's a long-term operator, he decided to retire in December, so that was actually a very good, very good loss to us for winter operations. He has been, since been replaced. It's very important to note, and I want to stress this, that we have the best reputation in this region for maintaining our runway strip to a standard that pilots are able to land on. We have not had a closed day because of the condition of our strip. Our closed days have always been weather conditioned, which means it has no visibility, but our boys are maintaining that runway exceptional. Central Mountain Air in 2013 announced they were going to do a morning flight and they're well into it. I think, you know, remember the first day, they were an hour and a half late going out because of the deicing and it just seemed to snowball right through that whole thing and into January and February, they decided to pull out. So hopefully we can convince another airline to do the same thing, not pull out. Capital Projects that we did last year renovated, actually what we did was throw some insulation in the walls of the hangar so we can try and save a heating bill there. And the curtain will be going up very soon. Groundside, we're putting up some nice stone walls. We've got all the stones and stuff, we're just, this year we'll finish that project. Emergency access roads are seventy percent done and those are off the ends of each end of the runways, giving our firefighters better access if we happen to have somebody go off the end of the runway. Terminal groundside lighting didn't get completed last year, it'll be completed this year. Tower HVAC, we did some changes to the, we were gonna do some changes to the HVAC system, but once, once we got into it, we found that it's a little bigger monster than we thought. It's a system that Transport Canada put in and it's not very good. Tower interior lighting, again, that wasn't done. We're going to change out some bulbs and stuff into some more energy-efficient bulbs. Airport entrance sign is, couldn't get that done because the gas, or sorry, the water system that was going through and they kept tearing up the road in front of the airport. So I decided to wait on that because, and now when I left today at the airport, there's the gas companies and they're gonna tear a strip across that road too. So we'll wait till everybody's done and we'll put the sign up. Submissions for this year, capital submissions are late for this year is a security camera system, CCTV for the parking lot, terminal building, security, airside, groundside. Terminal building roof is leaking, it needs to be rehabilitated. Airport security key card system mandated by Transport Canada to, so we can maintain a more secure airport locking system. Tower HVAC controls, that's from what we found last year and trying to improve that this year. Fencing relocation is to try and get the fence away from the creek, which every animal in the world seems to know that hole and goes through it and it causes us nothing but trouble for wildlife incursions onto the runway. Tractor replacement and mower replacement, it's a bigger mower, hopefully will take us less time to cut the grass up there. It has to be cut because of wildlife control, keeps the rodents down, keeps the foxes, the coyotes out and the raptors out. Another one that I forgot to put on here is electrical service to the electric gate on First Street. It's a security and safety issue to try and keep the public from getting through that gate. It has, it actually has a number of other things about it is that the firefighters have got their training area in there and they needed, they need electrical as well. And I'm also talking to prospective lease seed that may want to lease beside the fire training area, maybe. So we need electrical service in there. Some ACAP stuff, and for those who don't know, ACAP is... Some ACAP stuff, and for those who don't know, ACAP is Airport's Capital Assistance Program that Transport Canada provides us money for projects that they approve, sometimes they don't. One is the culvert replacement runway zero-six threshold, I don't know if they're going to approve that, but we're going to give it a good try and see if we can get some money for that. Plow truck and a runway sweeper, we need, we have, we did, we've had some breakdowns this year, and so we do need a new, new plow truck and a new runway sweeper, and Transport Canada will pay for that. Tracker two runway surface condition reporting system is an automated system that is now mandated by Transport Canada. It, the boys can go out there and do readings on the runway, they come in, they submit that, those readings into operating system, it goes to Ottawa, it goes to the flight services in Peace River, and then it goes to every pilot that wants to read it, so they have on-time information of what condition our runway's in. Apron threshold, concrete repairs, they're getting pretty bad now, they're starting to crack, gravel crack, and so we need to repair those, and I'm, I'm pretty sure ACAP will pay for that. Runway taxiway apron subsurface drainage rehabilitation, I think this is the problem with our electrical system, because we have water in our, in our pul pits where our electrical conduits are, and we're not getting subsurface drainage anymore, it's not, I don't think it's working very well. So, the total of, the ACAP, if we get it, would be around six million dollars, if we can get that money out of Transport Canada. Twenty fourteen, passenger stats are the best we've had since 2002, and I, I can't find my, my data from before that, but I'm pretty sure it's, it's, I think it's nineteen ninety-eight that we had twenty thousand. Nineteen thousand fifty-four for twenty fourteen, and that, that takes into account that, that CMA never went to Fort Nelson in November and December, we probably would have topped twenty thousand this year. Emergency exercise, we had a, every, every four years, we have to have a tabletop exercise mandated by Transport Canada, the fifth year, we have to have a live exercise. This year, we had a live exercise, it was a bomb inside a suitcase, it, it, it didn't go very well, so, you know, and that's what it's, you know, that's why we do it. So communications were not the best. And finally, the floating basis finally been removed from Transport Canada's publication, so it is now officially not there. And that's it, any questions?
Counselor Harzal?
Yes, thank you, Ian, just a couple of questions, the track two, how is that different? I mean, right now, you already have an automated system, so this is, this is an upgrade, is it?
This is, the one we have now, okay, three years ago, we got this one and we leased it.
Okay.
Transport Canada wasn't interested in paying for it at that time. We were kind of on the cutting edge, we were the first in Canada to have, to lease one, small airport that leased one, and when I got it, the boys just, except for the older fellow, he didn't like it too much, but you could just see the benefits of having this thing, it took a lot of pressure off the guys, all the information is there, they use it.
Oh, yeah.
It's very good, and, and then, a year ago, Transport Canada decided that that tracker system, and there's another system out there, still more money, we're going to be part of this automated system that NavCanada was doing, so now they're willing to put it on for, that we can actually purchase it through them, which, which we're going to do.
Great. Okay, the other question that's, and it relates to the nine, the figure of nineteen thousand, whatever you said, does that include then, in that figure, the, all the passengers from, who are passing through Dawson Creek from Fort Nelson?
Correct.
Okay, so they're not originating?
No.
In Dawson?
No.
Thank you very much.
And that would be about, around thirty-five, forty percent would be the...
Well, then that spawns another question, then, you know, you said the highest figure since two thousand and two. So the two thousand and two figure, did that, do we have that transshipment?
Do you want to know what the figure was?
No, I just wondered if, if we compare it, if the apples to apples comparison?
No, there was no, there was no transshipment because, because everybody was originated from here, yeah, and at that time, two thousand and two, we had, I believe, four aircraft in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they were just Dawson Creek, two and five Dawson Creek, yes, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison?
Not really, no, except for the fact that you do, we do service those passengers. They come in and they use our terminal, and, and so it's, and, and every airport does it, Vancouver does it, and, you know, so there, there's a lot of their passengers transferring through, and they use those figures as well.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers?
How do you feel about paid parking out at the airport?
It, okay, I would love it, except we don't have enough part, enough people parking there to make it worthwhile. In order, if to buy the system and maintain it, it would cost more than the amount of people you have parking there.
Just curious.
Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Wilber, did you have a question?
Nope.
Sorry. Anything further? Thank you, Ian.
Would you love to get in that ACAP money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have fifteen immediate questions, guys?
Yeah, I had a couple. First off, on the dangerous goods route, I guess whoever wants to can speak to this, the report said that people brought concern about truck traffic through the city to both Mayor and Council, and I was wondering if you could just summarize sort of what concerns they heard from the population of truck traffic through town?
I think it's, certainly the feedback I've received is the concerns about people having this heavy truck traffic coming right through town and not utilizing the dangerous goods route, at what we thought, and I think what the public perception is, that it's a dangerous goods route, when in fact, it's not a designated dangerous goods route, and for us, it's about ensuring we have that conversation about how we want that transportation and that traffic impacting our community.
Okay. And are there any particular, like, items or materials that are of particular concern that have been seen increasingly on the roads? I'm not sure if that's a question for staff.
I don't think it's a specific item that is a concern, but it's more the volume of traffic we're seeing within the community that's probably driving more of the complaints or concerns that I've received from the public in terms of that heavy truck traffic going down Alaska Avenue and Eighth Street, and the speeds that they're traveling really concern the public, not, more so than the commodities they're carrying, and that's certainly the feedback I've had. Okay. I think that should do it for questions. Good. That, sorry, Counselor Harzal?
Just a related topic, related matter to this trucking thing, is, you know, truck drivers need a place to stop and to rest and so on, and the ideal situation would be somewhere, there'd be, on the main, on this bypass highway or between Dawson and Foose, there's a place where people can have their rest, clean up, have food and so on, and that's, that's why some of the truck drivers you'll see are in various places in town, but if there was a, so hopefully, in the developments that are happening, happening in the community, we'll have something that makes it easy for truck drivers to access the amenities without having to come into town.
Great. Thank you. Anything further?
Uh, no.
Natalie, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Motion to recess to close. Counselor Wilber, Counselor Schuman, all in favor? Opposed? It's good, thank you. So we'll take a five or ten-minute break, then sort of close?